6:59. Well done.
That's not mine.
It's his. All right, Mr. Mayor, can you hear us all right?
Lovely.
Yeah, that's better.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Right. I'm seeing a time of seven o'clock here. Is it match there?
Yep.
Same time zone. We're good.
All right. All right, well, it is seven o'clock PM and I'll call this Berry City Council meeting to order on this Tuesday, March 28th at 7:00 PM. Council present tonight is Council Dearing, Council Shawn Bell, Council Booton, Council Lozon, Council Wazak, and I think I saw Council Stockwell there too. Is that right?
Yep, that's right.
Yep, okay, and staff president and joining I see City Manager Strela Castro, Clerk Treasurer Dawes, joining us online Assistant City Manager, Don Monahan, Planning Director Janet Chetney. Are there any other staff members that should be recognized?
Um, yes, we've got Jeff Bergeron in the audience. We've got Stephanie Caranta in the audience. We've got Rowdy Parker in the audience.
Thank you. Thank you, Carol.
Joe Walsworth.
I think that's good.
Joe's online. Yep.
Got it. Thanks, Janet. So tonight's agenda is available online and in the back of the room. This meeting has been publicly posted, is being recorded and subject to Vermont's open meeting law and the council's rules of procedure, which are available online. Like to offer a really warm welcome to all of our guests and members of the public that are joining to us tonight and to those joining us online, including me, please keep in mind that the chat function should only be used for technical issues or difficulties. The city offers online access as a convenience and the council will continue the meeting if any technical difficulties occur. And if it occurs on my end, Council Booton will take over as Chair of the meeting. If you could raise your hand or signal if you'd like to be recognized and I'd ask that Council Wazak do a little bit of air traffic controlling as he often does with people online and in the room to help recognize people and make sure things go smoothly. I'll call in speakers in order, allowing those who haven't spoken yet to speak first and limiting time if necessary to do the city's business. Anyone who wishes to speak should state their name for the record, and if you have any questions about process or procedure, please ask and we will get it sorted. I want to thank everyone in advance for participating in a civil way. That brings us to the second item on the agenda, adjustments to the agenda. Manager Strela Castro, are there any adjustments?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to request an adjustment. We have a lot of distinguished guests in the room and I believe they're going to be honored by our neighboring town a little bit later tonight, so if there's no concerns, I'd like to move items 8A and 8B to immediately after adjustments to the agenda.
No objections here. Any objections from council?
Seeing none.
All right. So that would take us to item 8A, moved up, resolution honoring the Spalding High School Girls Hockey Team on the occasion of winning the 2022-2023 State Division One Championship sponsored by Council Dearing and the City Manager. Who would like to kick this off? Is it Council Dearing?
I'd be more than happy to and honored as well.
Oh, council, I'm going to interrupt you for it. There are some folks out outside. Come on in for this. Squeeze in. We're all family. Just get in here. Go ahead, council.
So this is the Berry City Resolution number 2023-02, a resolution honoring the Spalding High School Girls Hockey Team for winning the Division One State Championship. Whereas the Spalding High School Crimson Tide Girls Team achieved excellence on Wednesday, March 8th, 2023, when they defeated Burlington Colchester by a score of four to one to win the Division One State Championship at Gutterston Fieldhouse in Burlington, Vermont, bringing great joy and pride to the city of Berry. And whereas the victory was a total team effort with the first two goals of the game scored by eighth graders Amelia Healy and Peyton LaPerle and seniors Rebecca McKelvey and Hannah King added tallies to support a 13-safe performance by goalie Raina Long. And whereas the dominating victory in the state championship game put an exclamation point on a dominating 21-0-1 undefeated season for the Tide during which they outscored their opponents 117 to 19 and posted 10 shutouts. And whereas Spalding continued its regular season dominance into the playoffs, convincingly winning both matches, outscoring opponents 11 to 1 and posting one shutout. And whereas the championship was a fitting end for the team's graduating seniors Rebecca McKelvey, Molly Parker, Maddie Seaton, Hannah King, and Raina Long, who went 59, 4, and 2 since her freshman year. And whereas the team was led by head coach Dave Lawrence and assistant coaches Brian Wilkin, Ashley Pelkey, and Vicki Simmons, who have shown dedication and service to the Spalding High School Athletic Program and guided the team that brought the first Division One title of any kind to Spalding since 2010. Now therefore be it resolved by the Berry City Council that the members of the council commend the Spalding High School Girls Hockey Team upon its Division One State Championship and congratulates Avery Burke, Ruby Harrington, Gracie Lunt, Peyton LaPerle, Amelia Healy, Hannah King, Aubrey Trembley, Kayla Moulton, Riley Pelletier, Bella Rena Fontana, Molly Parker, Laney Thayer, Ellie Parker, Allison French, Rebecca McKelvey, Lily Mayo, Maddie Seaton, and Raina Long. Head Coach David Lawrence, Assistant Coaches Brian Wilkin, Ashley Pelkey, and Vika Simmons. Team Managers Maria Saldi and Maria Pelletier. And be it further resolved that the city council extends to each of the members of the 2022-2023 Spalding High School Girls Hockey Team our sincerest wishes for their continuing success academically and athletically. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be placed in the permanent records of the city of Berry and that a copy be transmitted to the members of the team, the coaching staff, the coaching staff, and to Spalding High School. So we have one of these for all of you ladies.
You know.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Get him a little airtime, you know?
Form a line. You guys know how to do this with handshakes. I've seen it all season.
Do they have to be lined up in front of us?
Do we need a motion?
I think you guys should all come on up here and have a photo opportunity with our city council.
This hardware.
And the hardware, yes. All right, you can just come on up, fill up around the camera. It'll be fine. Just don't kick it over. Or kick it over. That would also be fine. Fill up the whole thing. If someone in the back wants to hold up the trophy, great, no pressure. You can. I'd hold up a trophy if I had a trophy. I don't know how to do trophies.
My coaches too.
There you go.
How did you get the resolution numbers? There's a process. I'm getting too old and I clearly need to retire.
Thanks, ladies.
We don't want, yeah, we don't want you to leave without them.
Thank you guys. Great job this season, ladies. Thank you. Thank you. I'm not as fast as you are.
So where's Mr. Lawrence? I saw him.
Right there.
He ain't getting off that easy.
I thought so, Dave. Truck's running outside.
Have a seat. No, have a seat right there and just tell us about your team.
No pressure. They're just a very special group of kids is the best way to describe them. They were a lot of fun to coach. We ask a lot of them. We're pretty hard on them at times. Sometimes we have fun. Most of the time I think we have fun, but they're just special kids. They work really hard and especially in a day and age where it's been tough on them, whether it was COVID and not being allowed to do a lot of things or the pressures, different pressures kids face today with social media and all these other things. It's a great outlet for them and they treat each other like a family. They respect each other. Their parents have been great and I'm just really proud of them. They just, they're a special group of kids that I think have a bright future, whatever they do on the ice, in the classroom, at college, future jobs. They're just, they're winners on and off the ice and I'm just really proud of all of them.
We're proud of them too, Coach.
Thank you.
Make the motion to approve the resolution?
Second. There's a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And girls, if I could, you are just something special. I mean, I know the work, you know, we watch it for 60 minutes, but we see the 600 minutes that goes into it and the hard work that goes into it. And I gotta tell you, you know, as a dad who watched his son win two back-to-back state championships and then a national championship in college football, your parents are so proud of you. You know, your town's so proud of you. When you do something like this, it lifts all of us up. So I just can't thank you enough for your dedication and for everything that you've done for Berry. And your moms and dads, sorry, you gotta sit in the stands for three hours and drive them everywhere, but that's just how it goes, but thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I, if you'd recognize for a brief moment?
Sure.
That's a yes. That's a yes, yes.
I just want the community and the team to know, I think they already know this, Representative Williams and myself have invited them to the State House at 9:30 on Friday morning, that's Wednesday, this Friday, to be recognized by the House with a resolution. Parents and community are all welcome. It's after all the people's house, so please do come. And we're so proud of you, the first team that I remember having an undefeated season as well as a state championship. So thank you, ladies.
Thank you. That's all there is. Sorry, we got nothing else.
No, no.
Right, yes.
So item 8B.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, item 8B on the agenda.
Item, are we going back to, oh, we did 8A and 8B? Yes.
Correct.
The next item is, well, yeah, definitely, and thanks to everyone for being there. I wish I could be there tonight at a conference in Boston. And, and if you want to stick around for the whole meeting, you're more than welcome. I think we're all right. So item B is another resolution recognizing the service of Rowdy Parker on the occasion of his retirement. City Manager Strela Castro?
He's passed it off to me.
Clerk Dawes is going to read this.
Berry City Resolution 2023-03, a resolution recognizing the service of Rowdy Parker on the occasion of his retirement after more than 35 years of service to the city of Berry. Whereas Rowdy Parker was hired as a maintenance worker with the city of Berry in July 1987 and will be retiring on April 7, 2023 as the BOR foreperson after more than 35 years of dedicated service at the Civic Center facilities, city parks, and recreation areas. And whereas Rowdy has been a legend at the BOR responsible for creating untold sheets of ice, making thousands of Zamboni runs, assisting with special event setups and maintaining the pool filtration systems, demonstrating his vast knowledge base and value to the city. And whereas over his 35-plus-year career, he was a friendly face to many recreational skaters, figure skaters, and hockey teams, many of whom now come to skate with their children on the best and fastest ice in central Vermont. And whereas this, the community's affection for Rowdy was most recently on display at the Gutterston Fieldhouse in Burlington, Vermont, where a cutout of his friendly face was plastered over the front of the Zamboni during the Girls Hockey Division One State Championship Game won by Spalding High School. And whereas Rowdy took great pride in his work preparing facilities for those, for use by residents, and he played an integral role in upgrades to the BOR swimming pool, parks, and playgrounds, helping to ensure that generations to come will enjoy these recreation areas. Now therefore be it resolved that the Berry City Council wishes Rowdy Parker the very best in his retirement and does hereby declare Friday, April 7, 2023 to be Rowdy Parker Appreciation Day, to express to Rowdy our most profound appreciation and sincere thank you for his 35-plus years of dedicated service and wish him the very best in his retirement. And therefore be it resolved that a copy of this resolution be placed in the permanent records of the city of Berry and that a copy be transmitted to Rowdy Parker by order of the city council that's 28th day of March 2023. And I didn't look up because I would have cried.
Team would like to present you something, Rowdy. I'll turn it over to.
Oh, Rowdy, you're not getting off that easy. You know, you know the drill. Get over there.
Name will stand here for support.
You can do it, Rowdy.
I just want to give him now. Well, it's been a long time. I love it up there. It's hard to say bye.
Well, don't. Retirement's overrated. Come back. Look, there are such, there's such a thing as volunteer Zamboni drivers.
I gotta put up with a lot of stuff. Well, that's, that's all I can say now. Thank you.
Thank you, Rowdy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rowdy.
One more.
Yeah, please.
I think I can speak, Dave.
You gotta come up. You gotta sit, sorry, but the mic won't pick you up if you don't.
Um, you know, I think speaking with Dave too, you know, we grew up playing hockey here in this community. We won state championships in 96 to 97 while we were here and Rowdy was doing the ice then. And there's no better place to play hockey than the BOR and it's because of that ice surface that he's managed to maintain for for all of his years and for that, we just appreciate you so much. I mean, you're always there, always willing to do what you need to do. When we ask you to do something, you're, you're, yes, let's go, let's do this and fantastic, getting all those extra nets out on the ice for our goaltenders and they're heavy too, right? I mean, so just, we're gonna miss you a lot at that place. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you very much for all your service.
Thank you, Rowdy.
Thanks, Rowdy.
Give a picture with Rowdy real quick.
Put your jersey on, Rowdy.
Oh, yeah.
Do it.
It's cold on that ice.
Come on up.
Yeah, we gotta get a picture.
Fill in the camera. Oh, it fits good.
So turn around the other way, Rowdy. Rowdy, thank you.
Thank you.
Drive safe to Berry Town.
Yeah, hope you don't get lost.
Hope you don't get lost either, Dave.
All right, Mr. Mayor, give it a couple seconds. People are milling and seething and leaving and all right. 7:20. Rowdy, when's your actual, like, last day? Is it right now? It's the 7th, 7th.
It's like 14th?
Oh, okay.
The resolution says the 7th.
Yeah.
Does it matter that the resolution says the 7th? Oh, okay. Well, maybe he'll change his mind again.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I think you're good. The team is filing out, so I think you're good to resume.
Thank you, Council Wazak, and we'll let the record show that that one was adopted by unanimous consent with no objections. So that takes us to Visitors and Communications. This is an opportunity for a member of the public or visitor to speak to an item that is not on the agenda tonight. If you'd like to address an item that is on the agenda, raise your hand as we take up that item of business. Are there any items for Visitors and Communications for the council tonight?
None in the room. Bye, Rowdy. Seeing none online, seeing none in the room.
All right, with none online and none in the room, that takes us to our consent agenda. We have several items on the consent agenda tonight. There's a regular city council meeting on Tuesday, March 14th, 2023, the minutes. We have warrants to ratify for the week of March 22, 2023. Approval of the city warrants for the week of March 29, 2023. Are there any licenses or permits, Clerk Dawes?
Yes, yep, we do have some licenses and permits. Food establishment, Mulligan's Fireworks for the Berry Partnership for the Heritage Festival, July 29. Entertainment license, Mulligan's for their annual license and the Berry Partnership for their annual license. Baked With Love, the Berry Pride Event on June 10, 2023 in City Hall Park from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And then the Rehab Gym on May 20th is holding a strength meet in the private parking lot behind the gym. All of those are included in the consent agenda. Motion to approve?
Oh, well, we haven't gotten through the list yet. Still more, but I'm glad that we're getting the fireworks over now, so the rest of the meeting can be nice and smooth. The authorized the contract for Televate for dispatch staffing and training study. We have the contract for White and Burke for TIF tax increment financing consulting services. We have ratification of the application. Manager Strela Castro is prepared for the or no, I'm sorry, the Public Works Department is prepared for the Fall 2022 Vtrans Transportation Alternative Grants. We have the authorization of planned purchase for public works vehicles, which I believe are up to $90,000 to fill an immediate need and then acceptance of the FY24 Municipal Planning Grant. And I would ask that that one be taken up separately since I manage that program and would need to recuse myself on the city side and also just as a matter of disclosure, those funds are allocated across the state by Regional Planning Commission territory and I do not score any applications from central Vermont to avoid any avoid any potential conflict on the state side. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda except for item H?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Council Wazak.
Council Shawn Bell and seconded by Wazak.
Second by Wazak. Any further discussion?
If I may, Mayor, I just wanted to thank Carol Dawes and the manager for all of their work, you know, speaking directly to item E for all of their work in getting the city's TIF district getting that time extended. I recall a meeting not that long ago when we were told that it would never happen. And then we went to work and Carol, you went to work, Inklis, you went to work, and guess what? We made it happen.
We're, we're, we're in front of House Ways and Means tomorrow, so we're
We're gonna make it happen. Thank you. I appreciate you.
Any further discussion for those consent agenda items? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. And Council Booton, can you call the question for the consent agenda, item H?
Sure. Entertain a motion to approve the, accept the FY24 Municipal Planning Grant?
So moved.
No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Council Booton. That takes us to item five, the city clerk and treasurer report.
All right, um, who am I? What am I doing? All right, just a few things. The, I've received confirmation from the school that the Berry Unified Union School District budget revote is scheduled for May 9th, which coincides with Berry Town's town meeting elections. Voting in Berry City will be at the Old Labor Hall because the Civic Center complex is busy that day with the the Civic Center complex is busy that day with the annual highway show. So we'll be at the Old Labor Hall for the day. Ballots will be mailed out automatically to all of those who voted early absentee for the March seventh election. That's just under six hundred people, and we're still accepting, obviously, requests for ballots to be mailed, so feel free to contact us anytime to request a ballot. They'll be mailed out as soon as they're available. My understanding is that they hope to approve a warning later this week. And as soon as they have their warning approved, then we'll be able to print and mail out the ballot. A final reminder that water and sewer bills are due by the end of this month, on March thirty-first, which is Friday. So come on into the office or pay online or put them in the mail. They're fine as long as they have a U.S. Post Office postmark with the date of the thirty-first or earlier. As Councilor Lozon mentioned, S ninety-four is the bill that is in the legislature right now that would extend our TIF incurrence of debt window of by two years. It has passed out of the Senate and is now in front of the House. And the manager and I are testifying in front of House Ways and Means tomorrow morning. So hoping that that continues its smooth sailing through the legislature. And the last thing I wanted to ask is, at our last meeting two weeks ago, council approved the coin drop schedule for this, this summer. One of the coin drop requests was from the Legion Post Ten baseball team. They have withdrawn their request, leaving a vacancy. And so we went to the first one on the waiting list, which ironically was from the, the Legion for their regular activities. So I bring forward to you a request to place the American Legion on the, the coin drop request list for that August fifth date as a replacement for, for the Legion Post Ten baseball team. I know that this hasn't been warned, and so we'll ratify it at our next meeting, but I would like the, the council to approve it this evening.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Yes.
To Councilor Stockwell. Any further discussion on that matter?
I'd just like to, I'd like to make sure that we have good publicity for the school revote. Like, if we could do sandwich boards, like one outside City Hall.
It's a school item. We don't put any money into it. So whatever the school and the school board does for. You can speak to a school board member.
I've already, I've already expressed my complete disdain for, for depressing the vote in Berry City.
But you'll get the word out somehow.
Right, but, but that said, I mean, a four by eight sheet of plywood painted white and lettered and placed in front of the doors at the auditorium might go a long way when someone drives up and.
We do.
Just a friendly suggestion to our friendly neighborhood school board member.
Because we are voting in a different location, statute requires budget revotes to be in the same location unless it's not available, and in this case it isn't, but they do require signage. So we will make sure that there is signage up at the Civic Center that directs people to the, the Old Labor Hall. Plus, you know, I will certainly put stuff out on social media and Front Porch Forum, et cetera, so.
Thank you.
Things that don't cost us anybody.
Councilor Booton had his hand up, and then I had a question.
I'm all set.
You're good. Okay. Just on the American Legion coin drop, have they been asked if they want it?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
They said no to the last one, so I was like, I don't wanna do this whole thing again. Yeah, no, I, I confirmed with them that, that they were still interested and that that date worked for them, so.
So there's a motion and a second to amend the coin drop schedule as presented by Clerk Dawes. Any further discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. We'll put that up for ratification, so there's notice on the, the next agenda. Are there any further questions for Clerk Prendergast?
Seeing none.
Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to the Liquor and Cannabis Control Board. Are there any items for liquor and cannabis control?
Yes, sent around a list of liquor license, licenses for approval in the packet that went out either yesterday or today. This is our first round of license renewals for this year. It included, the list I sent around included whether these establishments were getting a first class, second class, third class, outside consumption permit tobacco or tobacco substitute and/or tobacco substitute license. I'm not going to read off the whole grid, but I will let you know that the license holders that are up for approval this evening are Asian Gourmet, Bella Campo Food Products, Beverage Baron, the Two Champlain Farm locations, the Two Cumberland Farms locations, Denty's Market, the Two Dollar General locations, Jiffy Mart, The Meltdown, Mr. Z's, Moutois, North End Deli Mart, and Walgreens. All require council approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of approving those, those requests, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Same. The ayes have it with one extension noted from Councilor Booton. That takes us to our city manager's update. Manager Charlie Castro?
Thanks, Mayor. Couple of updates for council. We've had some water main break activity this week. Unfortunately, DPW crews have been busy addressing main breaks on sixty-two and North Main Street on Saturday, Lawrence Avenue and South Berry Road on Monday. And crews worked into the night on Monday at the South Berry location to address that issue. A boil water notice was issued for that spot. It's very, it's limited. It's outside the city. But residents in that South Berry area of the break were impacted. We, it's been repaired. The water is back in those homes. The samples were taken this morning and delivered to the lab. And so fingers crossed, we should have, if we have a good result, we should be able to lift that boil water notice tomorrow morning. So for the folks impacted, you know, to keep an eye on our website on, on, on social media. We also did very targeted BT alerts to those residents because it was a very, like I said, targeted location. But thank you to the crews who worked really hard. I mean, this was, this is tough work. This was a, the South Berry site was a a state culvert that was sitting on our water pipe. We were there first. And so this is, you know, this is an unfortunate issue, but we've now addressed, hopefully, will not be an issue there.
And the state pays for it?
We hope so. Well, we, we broke their, their headwater, so we'll have to fix that. But yeah, it's unfortunately, it was their, they were right on top of our, our pipes there. We, we, and that's Jeff, Janet, Dawn, and I met with representatives from the U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Development last week regarding the odd project from the Sanders, congressionally directed spending money. So our first meeting with USDA on this project. This is a reminder, the Sanders grant provided three point five million. We have a forty-five percent match, so we're looking to identify two point eight to be complete in whole for that project. So we're looking at additional resources to finance the, the full picture on the project. Great advice and resources from USDA. We're looking at grants. We're looking at state funding as we reminded USDA that this serves as a shelter in the winter, the warming shelter. So it's an evacuation shelter. It's worth used for vaccination. So state has some interest in, in this facility being up to grade. So lots of real good options here, but we certainly have some homework, and the team and I are looking to complete that funding picture, which we need to do by September of this year. A Garfield Playground update. So as you may recall from the capital improvement plan, the replacement of Garfield Playground is in the, in year one of that plan. And Stephanie, who's here today, she'll be hosting an informational meeting open to the public to gather input about how to replace that playground. So we want to know what people, and really mostly the kids, have to say about what to put back in that space. So that'll be Tuesday, April fourth, at six PM, and it's a Zoom meeting. It's noticed, it's available on our website. It'll be on social media. For residents and interested folks who want to have a say about the future of Garfield, please join Stephanie for that. Just a couple other quick notes. Street cleaning has begun. DPW crews were able to begin street cleaning a little bit ahead of schedule. So you may have seen them out there earlier this week and late last week. And also exciting, our, the paving bids are due tomorrow. So the opening goes here at City Hall. And very, very excited for the agenda item on April eleventh, our paving contract. That's all for me.
Manager, and have you gotten any envelopes for the bids yet? Just out of curiosity.
We, we do.
Oh, that's good news. And thanks also for getting that street sweeper out there. It seems like spring's coming earlier and earlier, so. It's nice to, nice to see that. Are there any other questions for the manager?
Seeing none.
Hearing and seeing none, that takes us on to our first item of new business, which is the presentation and acceptance of an AED donation. And that's, I have that acronym right, but it's a defibrillator, right?
Yes, correct. So, so there's no, no packet item for this council. This is really an opportunity really for us to, to thank Reynolds, who's been a great partner for us in the city with these devices. We purchased our AEDs from Reynolds for various city sites, and they have kindly donated a device that will be added to the pool for the summer. So I know there's a, I believe there's a representative from Reynolds here today, and they're gonna be making the handoff to Jeff and Stephanie.
Can I ask your name for the record?
Yes.
Yep.
All right. My name is Brad Morris with Reynolds, and we just wanted to take the opportunity to provide the city of Berry with a brand new Zoll AED, along with a cabinet, which is not here, but the cabinet and the AED will be onsite at the Berry Street Pool. It was a pleasure working with the city, and we're always, we work with the local communities and provide aid saving equipment. It's a great, great project, and I enjoy working with you guys.
We certainly want to thank you. All the lifeguards are trained in AED, and we do hope that we never have to use it, but it's good to know that our chances of saving a life are drastically improved by this, and we know that Joe Alsworth is on tonight. He played a big role.
Yep, excellent.
We're very grateful for it, and thank you very much.
Yep, excellent. Thank you.
All I add, we have, we have one in the auditorium lobby. We have one at the BOR. And I just recently received one from Brad that I put the order in back in October. So we will have one in the meeting room in Alumni Hall also.
And there's one here.
And there's one here. So we're covered.
Yep.
Nicholas, would you take a picture of the three of them with the AEDs? That would be a lovely little thing.
Other than using it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you much. I saw Joe turned his screen on. I didn't know if he wanted to add anything.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry I couldn't be there tonight. This has actually been a program that we started back in two thousand fifteen when we received designation as a HeartSafe community. With that said, we've had a lot of folks asking how we could get more defibrillators into the city. Working with Reynolds, we were able to establish some special pricing. With that said, we've deployed six additional AEDs throughout the, the city, and Reynolds was gracious enough to donate this last one to the pool. We thought it was very fitting with the outfit of the pool and, and one of the things that we addressed. So I want to say thank you to Reynolds. They're really a great community partner, and it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be able to do this. So.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Alsworth, and thanks to the Reynolds for that very generous donation. Is any, any other? Do we need to take action on this? No, okay.
No, they, they grabbed it.
Started locked away.
It's gone.
All right. So with that, that takes us to approval of our second round application form for the ARPA, American Recovery Community Innovation Fund. Manager Charlie Castro?
Thanks, Mayor. So council, in the Friday packet, I had a memo and a, an inform that looking to send out to applicants for the Community Innovation Fund, as we've come to call it. This is the, so the two hundred thousand dollar pot of ARPA money that we put aside for groups that submitted letter of interest applications. The, the whole history, I know you, we've been through the whole history of this, but this was back in September. We put out requests. We received many applications. You have the, the item include, actually, the form includes all of the applicants that are pending. We've done, I think, a really good job of whittling that list down by finding, a couple weeks ago, we found funding for Turning Point. And so they were an applicant for ARPA that no longer needs to use ARPA funding. We funded the homeless shelter, the warming shelter at Aldrich Library was funded separately outside of ARPA. So we've done, I think, a good job of getting this list to be more manageable, but we know that there are very anxious folks who have submitted requests for funding who really want to get going on the, the next round of it. So this form, I believe, is responsive to the conversation we had last time. We discussed it, and wanted to make sure council, if there's any modifications, clarifications, any way we can make it better, certainly happy to. And then lastly, assuming this form is good to go, the timeframe we discussed last time on this topic was to have a completed second round application back to me for compilation for you then to review. And that would be by May first to me, and then we had it as early as May ninth. I don't know, we'll be, there's the school board election that night, so I don't know if we'll be meeting May ninth, but around that time, we then come back to to have the council review the materials and, and go from there. So that's really it. I'm, I'm happy to take comments, any feedback. I want to make sure this form is clear and responsive to what council wants to know when you have to make the decisions about the applications.
All right. I have a question. Does anyone else have? So the first thing, thank you for all the hyperlinks and all, and it being a live form. That is wonderful. One quick, the bottom of page fifty-one in the packet, which is the first page of the application, section three, project details, A, ARPA's one-time funding, that first box, I certify that no ARPA community innovation funds will not support recurring or operational expenses. Yeah.
Thank you. That's a great, I was making sure you read the form.
Thank you. And then I think just like a, a, a quick sentence in that first chunk of text at the very top of the form that says, like, if you have questions, call Nicholas or Rick or whoever is gonna, I'm not trying to like make the staff hold the hand of whoever's trying to figure this out, but.
And this is a limited universe of people, so I have no problem with that.
Yep. So that was the only two things I had.
Thank you.
Great catch. Is any other questions, comments on the, the application?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve as presented. Is there any further discussion?
Just wanted to be clear. So to you by May first.
By May first, yeah.
Give or take to the council by the middle of the month, May fifteenth, give or take. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Just to manage that. Thank you.
Great. And with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries, and we'll be looking for those second round applications in, in May. That takes us to a request to have Berry City placed on the next Green Mountain Transit Agenda to discuss recent service cuts. Ending that over to Councilor Wazazak, noting we have our Green Mountain Transit Board rep here, Christian Meyer. And I'm looking to see if.
Yes, Mr. Clark is in the room, I believe.
Oh, great. Wonderful. Yeah.
Well, thank you, Mr. Clark, for coming. Thank you, Christian, for coming as well. So I just want to give both the community and the council just some context for what's happening. There was a GMT board meeting. I think that was only last week, where multiple members of the council, some community members came in to talk about the service cuts that Berry's experienced in the past couple of years. There was a miscommunication where the, some members of the community felt they were denied placed on the agenda of GMT. It then came to our attention at the board meeting last week that it takes a municipality, like officially requesting space on the agenda to get on GMT's board agenda, which is a policy that they have. So this is that next step. It's the municipality just officially asking to be placed on the board agenda and via E. It's the municipality just officially asking to be placed on the board agenda and via email, as y'all have probably seen, Mr. Clark has confirmed, that will be on the next agenda for April. And, you know, some of, after talking, all the conversations that we've had about this over the past couple of months, some of my goals for that day would be to talk about a plan for the restoration of services, start the process of board membership for Berry City, discuss ways that we can work together to restore that service, and underscoring that, you know, it's, it's easy, it's one thing to have folks show up at Visitors and Communications Public Comment and say it, but I also think it really underscores that this is something that has the attention of the entire municipality and the community. And, you know, I appreciated the testimony that you offered, Mr. Clark, in writing, and there are some, there's a lot to build on there, I think. And I'd welcome any comments, but I also want to, we're requesting time on the agenda, so I think the discussion, out of respect for their time, we should have as much of that discussion at that agenda item as possible and not get too into the weeds tonight, I think is the best way forward. So I don't know whether, Mr. Mayor, you want me to turn it over to Mr. Clark or? Sure.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. Thanks, Counsel Waszczak. And appreciation to Mr. Clark for, for the, the, the nice letter that broke down certain questions, and I think answers quite a few questions. But, but as Counsel Waszczak noted, the council would like the opportunity to address the full board.
Absolutely. So good evening, everybody. It's really glad to be here. I'm a former Berry Town resident, so spent seven years in this community and, and feel a strong connection to it. And so happy to be here. So I've been the general manager since January, and one of the things I have to thank you all for is that this issue of, of the reduction in service probably would not have been on my plate to think about if it wasn't for you all raising the issue to me. And, and I'm glad that we're going to have an opportunity at our April Board Meeting to welcome the city there, to discuss where we're at, and to come up with strategies for what our return to service would look like. I can tell you that I'm excited about the, the prospect of Berry City becoming a full member. I think that that would be a wonderful thing, although I also recognize that the way the statute is written, that there's sort of a significant financial disincentive for you all. So I, I understand that you would want to take that into consideration because it would require a lot more annual appropriations towards GMT. And, but then it gives you full access to, you're on the board and, and a full member as far as making decisions for how GMT operates and its, and its communities. I can tell you that our hope is that we have the service restored as quickly as possible. It really is a staffing issue. It is something where we had 20% of our drivers in our Berlin operation, that's where the headquarters is, and is in Berlin. 20% of our drivers retired over a two-month period last year. We've only been able to get two back. The, there's a nationwide shortage of CDL drivers. One of the things that I've recognized, you know, even though I've only been here for a little over two months, is that our traditional methods of operating, where we drive these huge buses around, both in Burr, in the Burlington area and in the rural areas, you know, it doesn't make much sense when we can't recruit CDL drivers. And so I know that that's something that I'll be looking at. And I think that was raised as a point, which I totally agree with. My hope is, I think that the thing that's going to be the most helpful for getting the service restored actually is a partnership that we are entering into with Community Rides Vermont, or actually Capstone, to create Community Rides Vermont. Because if they are able to have better luck with recruiting, they have the potential of taking on some of the work that our CDL drivers are doing now, which would allow them to get back to fixed route. And I can tell you that, you know, looking at our, our inventory and the way we have envisioned service in Washington County, it is largely through fixed routes. That's what, that's why we have the big 25-foot buses. And, and so we are just not outfitted as well for the on-demand services that traditionally have been performed by volunteers. And so volunteers is actually another way that if Berry City was able to find folks that were willing to volunteer to be drivers, that would also be, be helpful. So happy to, happy to work with you all, happy to get the service restored. I mentioned that we have a new Rural Operations Director that will be coming, and we haven't had a Rural Operations Director in a long time. And I, not to be critical of, of folks in the past, but I, I think that that not having a director that was focused on operations in Washington County, I think it, you know, it shows. And so I'm happy to get that person back. And it's a person that previously served as the Rural Operations Director. We loaned him to V-Trans for seven years, and he's going to come back with a lot more skill sets that will be super helpful for us in providing the best service to the area.
I just also want to express appreciation for the fact that a lot of this happened before your tenure, and so I appreciate the communication.
Thank you so much for that update. Could you just elaborate a little bit more on what would be involved in being a volunteer driver? Did I hear that you would still need to be a, you need to be a CDL, right?
Oh, not at all.
No.
Our volunteer drivers use their own regular vehicles.
Okay.
And, and they drive folks around and, and you know, for, for some of the folks that use our on-demand service, they are wheelchair users. And, and so will continue to, to use the vehicles that are, are designed to carry wheelchairs. But for the on-demand travelers who are not wheelchair users, then we, you know, just your regular old vehicle. And one of the things that surprised me is that we have all of these hoops that we have to jump through for our vehicles. But if you're a volunteer, you can, you can use your 1973 Corolla. That's fine by us, you know, so it, it is kind of interesting.
So, Mr. Mayor, I was just, I have some hands in the room, but keep going.
Sure. And just one, one other question, then pivot. In calculating if, if the city of Berry were to become a, a board member of Green Mountain Transit, it, it appeared to me that it's based off the cost of the route, a percentage of the cost of providing the route. And I was curious how those are calculated, given that some of our routes cross through multiple municipalities.
Yep. The way that works is that then it's apportioned. So if you have, say, a route with five stops in Berry and five stops in Berlin, just for simple math, you know, it would be a 50-50 apportionment, I think, is the way that that would work. Our planning folks, if they're watching, are probably saying, no, that's not how it goes. But, but my understanding, you know, 70 days in, that that's, that's how it's done.
All right. I saw Jesse and then Counsel Dearing.
Well, unless you have questions for yet.
I do.
Yeah, okay.
So my first question is, who pays for the one Washington County board seat?
Who pays for it?
Yeah.
It's not paid for.
So to be a member of the board, you have to pay a due essentially. You have to pay to play.
Yeah.
So for us to get a board seat, we need to pay to play. So who pays to play for the Washington County board seat?
For the rural seats, those are selected by the different planning commissions, according to statute. And the reason for that was not to put any rural community in the position of having to put up the, the rather large local match. And so, so what you have with our Franklin County, they, they, the Regional Planning Commission there picks two folks. In Washington County, we have folks. And so there is actually a vacancy for Washington County alternate on the, on the board right now. And, and so, and those folks also have a vote. It will, I'm pretty sure that the way the law works is that you would then, there would be two votes for Washington County essentially if, if you became a member.
So who is exactly in charge of appointing the Washington County representative?
I think I'm gonna, we mentioned that Christian, hi, Christian, thank you for being here, is on the line, and Christian, I'm gonna turn that over to you.
Sure. Hi, thank you. Christian Meyer, Executive Director with Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission, as stated, the Washington County Representative to Green Mountain Transit. New to both those roles, but I can, I can try to answer questions as, as clearly as possible. My understanding, and I'll have to check this to, for accuracy, is that the RPCs are appointed as that Washington County Representative. So in that sense, I represent all of Washington County and including Berry City. So certainly going forward, I want to make sure we have a clear communication lines between all, all members, but, but this council and GMT.
Any other questions from council? Counsel Lozan?
So I've asked this question before, but it seems appropriate to ask it again. The reduction in the rules are directly a result of vacant positions.
Correct.
And as soon as those vacant positions are restored, hired, as soon as those positions are filled, those routes will be restored.
Yes.
Okay.
We've budgeted for them in our next year's budget and.
Are they in this year's budget, sir?
Yes.
This year's and next year's?
Exactly, yes.
So it's not a question of funding. It's literally if a CDL driver walked through, two CDL drivers walked through that door right now, and you said you're hired, those routes would be restored?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Clayton, thanks for being here. Just a question of the scale. You said 20% of the drivers. I'm just curious, what, what's the, what's the actual loss of the number of staff?
Four drivers left.
Four drivers, four drivers left your employment?
Yes, and that was 20% of our drivers and.
Two came back.
Got in two replacements, correct.
So a service, when, when did the drivers return? That, when were the replacements hired?
They arrived before I arrived, so I don't know exactly.
So there's been some restoration?
Yes.
There's been some restoration since, since maybe we were first updated?
Yes, so since I think that you.
Since we first started talking about this issue, which was back in August.
Yes, since then, yes, absolutely. Yeah. And we, and we have.
Twenty, you're down two.
We're, we're, we, yes.
Or is 20%, that's 20.
Yes.
And you're down two.
We're down two. We have another one coming on board in April, and we have another retirement.
Oh.
We're, we're doing a little dance, yeah. What, our, our workforce, it's not as bad in, or I shouldn't say as bad. It's not, our workforce is reaching retirement age. And, and so we're very scared about the fact that, you know, easily a third of our drivers could be departing in the next four years. And, and so that scares us.
I was waiting to see if council had any more questions. Jesse?
So for the record, I'm Jesse Rosado. I'm just a resident from Merchant Street. And so I want to say, first of all, with all due respect to Clayton, he is coming in in the middle of this. So that is important to note. I noticed that we have a Washington County Representative from the board online. I don't know how new he is, but I just want to make clear, this is the first time we've seen a Washington County rep from GMT show up at one of these meetings. This has been ongoing since June of 2022. So we're looking at, you know, I don't know, nine, 10 months. And there's been multiple communications back and forth with the board and packets, with letters from the city, all kinds of things that have gone that way. And yet still no communication from the Washington County rep. So obviously, we could use extra representation from Washington County rep on this board of governors for the thing. You know, I mean, I hear what's happening here, like, okay, so there's problems at GMT, a problem staffing, problems retaining, problems hiring. And I get it. I empathize with that, but it's, but it's really like, I mean, that's the job of running GMT is to, to get that done, you know what I'm saying? And where my empathy grows even more is with the rider at the bus stop. Okay, the person that is dealing with, like, less than adequate city commuter service, the person that used to be able to get a ride to work or to school and now can't get that ride to work and school because the schedule's changed and the bus doesn't leave town until too late or, or not frequent enough, or, you know, a lot of people have different things. Or even the person who has sat back and said, you know, I'd really like to take this job, but it doesn't work with the, the bus schedule. You know, and that person, you know, there's, I mean, now more than ever, we could, with inflation being what it is, with the supply chain being what it is, with, you know, sometimes people are three weeks out on, like, a spot on their mechanic's schedule. We could use this public transportation to, to be the safety net that it's supposed to be. We've, we've made this investment to make sure it's there for folks. And, and so this is when we need it to be the strongest, and this is when it's been the weakest. So my empathy is with the, the, the riders. I don't see how going to the Board of Commissioners now will make any difference. I mean, originally, they didn't want us to be there, Austin Davis. 50% of the conversation I had on the phone with Austin Davis, Chairman of the Board, was, don't come to our board. We're not set up to have people like this show up. Thank you for the four counselors and the city manager who did show up to that board. And part of me was like, when, when I heard that, I was like, man, we should come to that board, you know, just spite them. But like, that's not super efficient, or it's kind of petty, actually, and my, just calling myself out here. And so really, part of me starts to think about what else could possibly be said that hasn't already been said? What else could we possibly say to make a difference in GMT's situation and how they respond to this crisis, this transportation, commuter transportation crisis in Berry City that has been going on for nine months? And so my favorite thing is if this council would do three things in lieu of going to the Board of Directors. One, you guys have done a great job at standing in solidarity with the riders and the people of this town that could use the service. And so we, I just hope that you guys will continue to be steadfast in doing that. Thank you very much for doing it so far. Super appreciative. Second is, I think we need to write another letter, but I don't think it should be to the board. I think this time we should just write the letter to the governor. He's the executive of the state. He has a Secretary of Transportation. And just, just lay it out to the letter. Hey, they're having problems at GMT. There's all kinds of issues. They could use extra support. Maybe your, your, your folks can like, give them that support. Maybe your Secretary of Transportation can get involved and help the leadership over there. And that, and, and knowing Phil Scott, I think that, you know, I think that he'll get this issue. I think that he'll do a good job with getting the extra support to GMT, because clearly, if GMT wanted to get this done or was prioritizing this, it would have, it, it would have happened by now. It's been nine months. And the last thing is, is, is we, we need to raise awareness, public awareness about the issues at GMT. So we're, we're organizing a picket at the Mount Piler Transit Center. We spent millions of dollars to increase public transportation here in Washington County, the quality of public transportation in Washington County. And we've gone the opposite direction, the diametric opposite direction of that. And so I think we need to increase public awareness to say, there's problems at this bus service. And my favorite thing is if the city leaders would show up in solidarity with those passengers on that right there and show up and, and be, be a partner in this deal and just be a voice to say, hey, look, we need to get this fixed. And hopefully, those three things, that's, there's three suggestions are new, not what we've already been trying. what we've already been trying, because basically, you guys know, that, I mean, I was gonna read the minutes from the, the Leadership Committee, you guys all seen them, you know, it, it appears that we've been told to pound sand multiple times by GMT, they're a separate entity, we'll tell Berry how it works, we'll explain to them, you know, and, and this is, like, we're not, like, all's we want is our commuter service. The other day, I sat at a gas station with a special 53 bus, anybody sees a special 53 bus in town, I just want you to notice, like, is there anybody in that bus? I seen a special 53 bus fueling up at the gas station, I asked the guy, hey, are you on demand service? Yes, I am. How many passengers you give a ride to today? Four, four passengers that day, I didn't get into how long the shift was or any of that stuff, okay? But let me tell you how public transportation worked well for over a decade here in Berry City, they pick up a couple people at Tilden House, they pick up a few at the Courthouse, they pick up someone over by Beverage Baron, they drop and pick up a Price Chopper, drop and pick up in Mount Pili, and they move people in bulk, up and down the thing. I, the idea that that is not the priority really surprises me. Four passengers? I mean, a supervisor could jump in the minivan and drive out and grab those four passengers, this is that kind of situation. So we can't wallow in the problems here, we gotta get into the solution, find a solution to really, like, move this thing forward so we can get this bus service restored. So anyways, those are my thoughts, and again, I just want to say, I'm hopeful, Clayton, that I, I heard you, we're looking forward to restore this, I'm hopeful that you got it, I'm rooting for you, you're only here for three months, so I know you're walking into this thing, but, but this is not much different than what we heard from John Moore on August 2nd, it's not much different, and so let's, hopefully, we can move, move this forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse. And we had one more member of the public with his hand up.
Yeah, and just, just to clarify, the matter before the council is a request, a meeting before the Board of Green Mountain Transit, as proposed by Councilor Wazza's act. So, next, next member of the public?
I, I'm sorry, your, your name again?
My name's Connor.
Connor, and your last name Connor?
Wyatt.
Thank you.
You gotta sit, Connor, the mic won't pick you up. No, no, next in the black chair. Thanks, Connor, appreciate it.
It's not electrified.
There you go.
Essentially, I'm only able to be here tonight because I don't have to rely on the bus service anymore. A few months ago, I was job searching, I couldn't take anything that I needed to, to rely on the bus for. I relied on the bus on and off for years. In Chittenden County, it was awesome, you know, I actually would take it down here, I would take it to Waterbury, I took it all the time. Now, it's, it's, it doesn't even enter my mind or anybody else I know that I've had this conversation with, that, oh, I can take that job because I can take the bus there. No, you can't. I was just on the GMTA's website, last June, you guys said you started cutting services, and I think, I think what's really illuminating about your attitude on this is coming in here and saying, 20% of your drivers left, we got two back. Well, if you lost four, that's 50% came back, just the way you're saying the numbers, and, and you will hire people, but, you know, then you'll, you'll reinstate the service. Well, you've cut so many bus routes, what order are you gonna start bringing them back? I was at the, at the last Board of Directors meeting, and, you know, Christian Myers are Washington County Service Representative, why aren't these things being talked about? Why aren't, why doesn't anybody have an actual concrete plan? We're gonna get the city route, you know, I think it's Route 89 going first, and then the Hospital Hill route. None, none of these things are even being discussed, other than, oh, you know, we offer paid, paid training, you can, you can volunteer, you know, these on-demand services, I know for a fact, I can call and get a ride to a hospital appointment, but I can't go sit at a bus stop and take a, take a bus to the hospital appointment. You guys have people sitting there for an hour, you know, if it's more than an hour, they send another bus, but I just, I just think, like I said, the only way I'm able to be here tonight is because I was able to drive myself. You know, this, this isn't that rule of a community where, where everybody needs a car, it would be really nice, especially in the winter when I can't ride my bike, to, to be able to take the bus to work like I used to. And, you know, I think it's great to hear that these things will be reinstated, restored, but what order, you know, I, I feel that's an empty promise when, when there's no actual concrete plan on, I mean, it sounds like you just need two more drivers. What about all the drivers in Stowe that are doing the, the runs up to the mountain and stuff? So now that ski season's over, are those people gonna come on board? Are they able to take up those two other driving positions that you need?
One, one of them is decided to stay with us full-time, and that's where the person coming on board in April is, the rest are.
So what route will be reinstated then?
I, I can't answer that right off the top of my head, I, I don't know, but we're also losing somebody that same month, so it's, it's really just a wash. But the, you know, the Stowe service is completely supported by seasonal drivers that are not allowed to operate in Washington County on fixed route.
I'm sorry, I thought Stowe wasn't.
On fixed route, oh, I'm, yes, it's fixed route there, I'm sorry, but the, the Teamsters are the ones that have the contract to provide the service in Berry, Mount Pili, or Berlin, and the seasonal workforce in Stowe is non-union, they're, they just come in, in December, and they leave at the end of March.
But are they going somewhere else, are they going back to Florida? I mean, why can't they?
They, they, they're.
How many drivers?
They're generally part-time folks who, big incentive for doing it is that they get free skiing or snowboarding, and, and so that's their, they, they work the mountain, and it, and so that's where a lot of those drivers are, are there. We try to encourage them to come work for us, but.
Specifically how? Do you offer sign-on bonuses, do you offer pension?
I was just gonna say, Mr. Dwyer, respectfully, this isn't an interrogation of Mr. Clark.
I just feel like we have all these questions that keep, I mean, this isn't the first, this is the first time I've been here in person, but there's all these questions that don't even need an answer. I mean, we, we encourage them to do this, how, you know, if, if, I just feel there are a lot of empty answers.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I think that that's one of the reasons why we intend to officially, as a council, or at least I intend to ask the council, to go to the Board in a couple of weeks, that gives Mr. Clark and the Board time to discuss this, and hopefully have answers to some of those plans, to be able to put those things in place, because I agree with you that it's the same thing that we heard, respectfully, Mr. Clark, and, and again, underscoring the fact that you've been in your position for three months, it is very, it's basically the same thing we heard back in August, and so I, I think that that's the intent of this request to get placed on the Board's agenda, is to have time to talk about exactly these things. So, thank you, thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, do we, Mr. Mayor, do we?
Yeah.
Sorry, Councilor Stockwell.
Sorry. So it's not possible to get a timeline, it's not possible to say this service will be restored by this date?
I mean, it's, because it's dependent on staffing, if I were to pick a date, it would sort of be an empty promise, because I don't, first off, I'll restore it as soon as we have the staffing, and so I'm not gonna pick a date out in the future and then not fill it, and if we can, we will fill it as soon as we can.
I have a question, if I may, I think it's just really important. Why, why not get creative with how you're dealing with on-demand, in the resources back? Like, what's holding back from getting a solution there?
Well, the thing to keep in mind is that we are obligated to provide this on-demand service, and yes, it may have been four people, but if those are, if that's a person getting dialysis, that's a pretty big deal, and so I, I think that, you know, if we were to cut that service, you would have other people here that would say, why are you taking away my needed medical, you know, transport?
Why not send a supervisor out with a minivan and grab that person?
Again, respectfully, it's not an interview, interrogation. I'm not trying to cut you off, but it's just not what this is set up for.
Yeah, and I, I'm, I'm thankful to the testimony that is advocating for the needs of Berry City residents, and also super thankful to our regional representative for being here tonight, as well as the General Manager of Green Mountain Transit. I think it speaks to their attention to the issue, and, and, and willingness to continue to have this conversation at an April meeting, and, you know, I know there are times when I felt like Jesse about our separate position, you know, it's just, and for the city, it's a critical, it's a critical city function, and we have really struggled to fill that position because of the fundamental shift in the labor market and the continued constraints, but I also hear that maybe if there are opportunities for innovation and partnership and trying to find a solution, I think Berry City wants to be at that table for partnerships and solutions, and, and really get down to brass tacks about what it might mean to become a member and how much that's gonna cost, but really appreciative for everybody focusing on this and being aware of the, the challenges it poses on a community with a, a good number of under-resourced people, and just people, everyday people who depend on this service to get where they need to go, as you well know, and, and, and certainly your job to, to run the, the bus company, and we want to help support you in, in doing that, in meeting the needs of Berry City residents and Central Vermont residents, so thank you, thank you, everybody, for, for the continued work on this.
And just last, do you, I'm just, for your policy, do you need a motion of the council? To, or, okay, okay, great.
So as long as you're here?
Yes.
So if there's a CDL driver watching this meeting by some miracle?
Absolutely.
That's not already a city employee.
What is your starting salary? What do you offer for benefits?
Sell the brand, dude.
Excellent, so, if you go to rideGMT.com, you will see that we have some of the best benefits in the states, our, our drivers pay 0% of their health insurance premium for them and their family, and it is primo coverage, I mean, we cover massages, you know, for our health, our health insurance, and the starting wage, and ironically, the starting wage in Washington County is higher than in Burlington, and it's $25 an hour, and we were able to make that adjustment through a negotiation with the Teamsters Union that does rural transport. We have not been able to come to terms with the urban folks on, on raising rates yet, because we haven't been able to agree what those would be, so they'll start at $25 an hour, and then after their probationary period, it will go up to $26.75.
So, over $50,000 a year, full health insurance coverage, and they get to look at your beautiful face every day?
Absolutely, and it's a very beautiful face.
It doesn't get much better than that, no, seriously, look, this is a problem, we see it, you know, I wonder sometimes if the post office is in a self-fulfilling prophecy. I, I appreciate my postal guy so much, he is awesome, but as the postal service gets more challenged, more people say, well, I'm gonna do this online, or, and it's this self-fulfilling prophecy, and I don't want to see that here. You know, I'm hopeful, you know, I think if we continue to advocate for you and do the things that you wanted us to do, Jesse, you know, I'm all for that, you know, but I don't see, I, I don't see what point, I don't see what browbeating is going to accomplish, you know, and the one thing that I've been waiting for, I saw it tonight when this young man, when Connor came in, I'm waiting to hear directly from the folks who are affected. You know, Jesse, you know, you've mentioned that, you know, thankfully, you've got your own vehicle now, and Connor mentioned that he can get himself around now, but, you know, I'd be interested in some sort of poll, or, and I said it a million times, some sort of Saturday morning meeting, Wednesday night meeting, I don't care, where folks can come in and say, well, this is how it's challenging me, this is, you know, I can't take this job, or I can't go grocery shopping at this, at this time when my children are in school, you know, I, I mean, those stories are a lot more moving to me, quite frankly, and I wish you luck getting the, the CDL drivers, I'll do whatever I can to help you, just gave you a little air of time.
I appreciate it.
And, and I wish you all a lot more fun.
And, and I will attend the meeting, but it won't beat a browbeat anybody, I'm sure you're doing everything you can.
I have, I have 60 seconds to, because, Mr. Bullock, the council of Lozón brought up a really great point, and I think it's super important. You know, Connor coming in here tonight, like, this is a guy that's never been to a city council meeting, you know what I'm, and so the people on the buses, like, these are folks that have a bunch of kids, you know, they're trying to, you know, they're in transition, they're, they're working two jobs, you know, I mean, that's, you know, I mean, people are, have stopped me on the street to talk about this, you know, but these are not the type of people that are gonna walk into a city council, like, I promise you, these, these are not the people that are gonna be the insiders of the legislature, the insiders of the council, like, they're really depending on us to do that for them, you know what I'm saying? Because that's just not their, their construction workers, their entry lever job people, they're all kinds of different types of people, but they're not really like city insider people, so, kudo to Connor, I was glad that he showed up, you know, and I wish that we could get seven or eight of them, but really, you know, if you go out and talk to the folks at the bus stops as I have, that's, you know, you'll recognize right away, they're not, they're not the type of people to show up at a city council meeting.
Thank you for that point, Jesse, and in the, the interest of time, I do, I do wanna kind of move along, but, but I do think it speaks to how important it is to go to the people, not ask the people to come to you, and, and it'd be nice to, if there's an opportunity to learn more about the public outreach that is already being done by Green Mountain Transit, or the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission, when it looks at the transportation plan, and potential outreach that we as a city could do at, at points of service, that might get us the, the, the type of feedback that Councilor Lozón feels, is asking for, so. So with that, is there unanimous consent to join the GMT meeting on the April at the, at the invitation of the General Manager?
Yes.
No objections, all right, the camera's pointed in the other direction, so I can't see anybody.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Clark.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Jesse, thank you for coming in.
So that takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is discussion of next step on the prospective sale of the Weelock House, and I'll hand that over to City Manager, Charlie Castro.
Thanks, Mayor, so, and we have Michelle Hubert, our Realtor, joining us as well, so, as I mentioned, there's, there's no item also associated with this agenda, action, or item, there's no memo on the packet, I should say. We, just a little bit of background for, for all of us and for the public watching, the council decided to list the Weelock House and to, to accept prospective offers until Friday, March 10th, so I'm proposing to invite prospective purchaser or purchasers to our next council meeting on April 11th, and have them present their plans to the council in an executive session. We're having this session today so that Michelle, who's been our, our point of contact with the prospective purchasers, can hear what the council's questions are, so that we can, you know, Michelle and I, you know, mostly Michelle, prepare them for how to come prepared to best address the questions you all have, the information you all want to hear, the data, the plans, all of that, so this is really an opportunity for Michelle to, you know, for you to share with Michelle what she should be sharing with prospective purchasers who would be here two weeks from now in executive session to discuss their, their plans for the Weelock House. And that's it for me, I really, and I know the, the mayor shared something with, with, with some of his questions, I don't know, Mayor, if you wanna?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Nicholas, yes, so some of the questions that I thought would be helpful to have ahead of time is just to understand the existing and anticipated revenue, revenue sources to help sustain building expenses, including insurance, buildings and ground maintenance, accounting utilities, taxes, and, and the extent to which any taxpayer support, any of those expenses. Love to hear about renovation plans, I know some of that, you know, just in general, I want to hear about everybody's renovation plans, if, if they'll pursue any tax stabilization to support renovations, if they're gonna pursue downtown tax credits to support renovations, if they're gonna agree to the property restriction to preserve the facade, which could be in the form of a, maybe an easement or deed restriction that, that the city could provide language for ahead of time, if they'd agree to write a first refusal to sell the building back to the city at a price offered, adjusted for inflation, plus any actual cost of any improvements, or alternatively, the appraised value, if the purchaser can no longer remain in the building, if, just a general explanation of how the offer represents the high. If, just a general explanation of how the offer represents the highest and best use as the city looks to grow downtown vitality, increase foot traffic and time spread of activities downtown, main build, maintain buildings and facades and, and grow the grand list and grow employment. On the, on the public bidders offer, I was just curious if they've looked, other organizations experiencing owning any downtown real estate prior, prior organizations choice to divest and any other example where a nonprofit executive director is the principal of LLC serving as the landlord and how that might impact organization and board dynamics over time as personnel and board members change as primarily city tax funded organ, funded organization. And then last, if successful, how the new, new potential purchaser would welcome and support new businesses in Berry, even those that may have similar product classes to create an even more welcoming, open and supportive downtown real estate and commercial marketplace with shared prosperity as, as the primary goal and not protectionism or any competitive exclusion. So those are mine.
Well, I think that about covers it.
Phew. Can you send me that list?
That would be great.
They were, just for the record, I know you didn't get them, but the council received an email a little before, it's in your inbox.
Oh, it is. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I have a question, but Council Dearing had his hand up. Oh, you were good, okay.
I did, but I don't. I answered every question I could possibly have. Appreciate you, Mr. Mayor.
Love that. I still do have a question. I just want to sort of underscore my, for the publicly known bidder, the diverse, the diversification of revenue streams, it's just, there's a lot of city dollars already there, so are we just paying ourselves, getting a refund on our tax check? And then for the other bidder, I know that this is not business works, but I do not want to be having this conversation again in five years if something goes wrong. So I'd like to know if there is a plan for, I understand how naive this sounds, but like a 10-year plan for how they're going to survive in a downtown, in the industry that they are in, for a significant period of time, so we're not just back here again having this, because I've, I think we've had a conversation about the Weelock Building probably twice a year, every year since I was elected to the council. And I love the Weelock Building, but I'm a bit tired of talking about it all the time. So I'd like to have a decision that we can make, that's, that's going to nail this thing down for a significant period of time. So I don't know if that's a real question or more just a vibe, but if you could relay that.
It absolutely is, because anybody in business should have a business plan.
Right.
So maybe they can elaborate on that.
Great, thank you. All right, any other questions from the council? Council booth?
So it sounds like what we're going to do is we're going to go into executive session, make a decision, then come out, and the public's not going to have an opportunity to weigh on it, is that correct?
That's, no, that's, that's, I don't envision it that way. I think we're going to go into executive session to hear from the prospective purchasers because they, because of, it'll be sort of a negotiation at that point or could result in a negotiation. But, and this is not to say that on April 11th, the council has to come out of executive session and make a decision. There, there may be more deliberation. I think we'll have to wait to see really what the council's.
I mean, obviously, I, you know, I, I think that we should have like a public part of this, because I, I feel like there might be a lot of people that want to weigh on a, a public asset that isn't just a piece of land in East Knott Pillar, and this is really awkward with the, the feedback. You know, it's, it's not just a piece of land in Knott Pillar. There's like feelings towards that, that building, and some people have some really visceral feelings about it, in a negative way, but.
They can, Michael.
No, I know, I just.
That's why we publish an agenda in order for the council to make a decision. It has to be published, it has to be on the agenda, and folks have a chance to come in and talk one way or the other, so.
But a presentation in executive session won't be the same.
Yeah, I'm a little weird about that. I'm not quite sure, you know, I, I mean, I get it. If, if both offers fell apart and the council was having a dialogue with one or both of them, you could potentially put yourself at a disadvantage for future negotiations. So I, I do understand the rationale behind it, but like you, I mean, yeah, I'd be, and I don't think that's the intention. I don't think the intention is that we're going to listen to them in executive session and not give the public away, a chance to weigh in. I mean, I'd certainly be opposed to that. So, you know, we'll put it on the agenda, I imagine, in a week or maybe that night. I mean, nothing that says you couldn't have an executive session at five in the afternoon. And then, you know, meet at seven and have it on the agenda.
Just would like to see the presentation in the public.
Yeah. I mean, I don't see it much as a presentation. I mean, holy cow, we've seen the offers, you know, hello. You can read it to me if you want, but I can read myself.
Manager respond, and then Dave Delkor has a question presumably about open meeting law, and then Council Dearing.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, this, this is not, this was not an RFP, this is a real estate listing that's subject to negotiation. I could imagine that the council may choose to counteroffer, may choose to provide additional conditions on one or either of the prospective purchasers. And so I think that in order, I think our job is to get the, you know, the best deal for the city, and that, and that's not just money. I agree with that. I don't think it's just money. So it's to get the best deal for the city. And so I think the council can best do that if the council knows the full universe and is in a bargaining situation.
Mr. Delkor.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand, I appreciate what Nicholas is saying in terms of, there are aspects of this that I can totally see in executive session, but it's hard for me to, to understand why the, this is what I'd like to do with your building, would be something that happened behind closed doors. You know, that seems like something that everybody should be able to hear and react to and, and bend your ears about, because, you know, you're the people who have the decision about whether to sell their property. You can then take what you heard and go behind closed doors and say, hey, we, here's what we like about this one or that one, or maybe we should, you know, see if we can get more out of them, or, you know, there is a negotiation aspect to it, I just don't see it in the presentation.
I think in response to that, I'm trying to put myself in the shoes of a prospective bidder that may have a lease, may have employees, and, and entering a normal real estate negotiation. It, you know, it could adversely, both adversely impact them and potentially adverse, adversely impact the city's negotiation position if, and, and, and potential decision set if they walk. So it might be something that, that we want to run by an attorney and make sure that we're doing the due diligence and making sure that we're respecting the, the open meeting law contract provisions, because I, you know, this is about the real estate negotiation and, and there's an element of a, a contract, potential contract since that we're, I believe purchase and sale would, would fall under that category. So is that some kind of approach the council and the manager would be comfortable with?
Just before that, Mr. Mayor, Council Dearing had his hand up.
I have a question. Why can't we do a presentation style similar to how we did the city manager presentation with ARPA, that both city manager candidates came in, we gave them a guideline of what we expected from them, just as we're asking from the prospective owners of this building. You want to know kind of what you're going to do with the building and present it to the public, and then kind of get some information from the public, say, hey, you know, what do we feel as a council? I think that to kind of give that public presentation is important to give them the aspect to weigh in. That's my thought on it.
Manager, response?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, Counselor, just one big difference there is that, at least myself, I was, I was aware and had to sort of consent and that, that my name was public at that point. So I think in this situation, the one prospective purchaser has not made themselves, one prospective purchaser has made themselves known, and one or more others have not made themselves known, right? So I think that's one big difference that I, and I assume the other manager candidate knew as well, that his, you know, that, that this would be a public situation for, for them that they were entering to. I mean, my, my sense is that this is not an action that the council will, can, can decide in a closed session. There will be, as Counselor Lozon said, an agenda item. There will be formal council action on this. I think we're still at a negotiation point where to get the, the best possible situation for the city, it is helpful for that to happen behind closed doors so that the city is the one that knows the, you know, what's at stake for it and can move from there.
Counselor Chambel, and then Booton.
I, I have somewhat of an uneasy feeling about this whole thing, because this was advertised, you know, they, people in town have had full knowledge that building is up for sale. There's been information in the press along the way that it's up for sale. I'd, I'd hate to see us getting into a position where we are almost, I don't, this is not the right word, but I'm going to use it, turning it into a game show where we have, now the public can come in and sort of at the last minute, take a shot at the whole thing.
It's been a public listing for some time.
Pardon?
It's been a public listing for some time. There's a sign in the window, so it's, it's not like recusant.
So I, I, and I think, were we to do that, what we're going to do is, when and if we ever want other potential buyers or other people to negotiate with us, they don't want to do it, they don't want to touch us with a 10-foot pole, because it's, in my opinion, we're kind of stepping out there and then pulling back, and it's like a breach of trust as far as I'm concerned.
Counselor Booton?
I guess it would be nice to know if the other, if there's another bidder, whether or not they, if there was, be interested in letting the information out.
I think we can, I think we can ask any prospective purchasers that haven't made themselves public. I don't see, Michelle, I'm looking to you for any, but I, I don't think.
I can ask them, I mean, I see your point. I mean, it could be, depending on somebody's position, anybody's position, and may not be something that they want to put out there, but I can certainly ask.
I mean, I, I still do believe that it, it could potentially hurt the city's bargaining position if, if all the other potential purchasers know what other potential purchasers are, are offering, and I, I know.
Not financially. I'm not suggesting financially when it comes to the money, the numbers.
Oh.
I'm just talking about like plans and structures.
Got it.
That's, that's all. I apologize, I didn't explain that.
I got it.
Um, so I'll go, and the call, call in Counselor, I didn't miss you, did I? Okay.
Yeah, that's all right.
Okay, I'll go, then Counselor Lozon, and then Chambel. So, yeah, no, I agree with the manager that like we can't, or we should not have this, you know, that this is a sale of city property, and therefore the taxpayers have every right to weigh in here, but we can't just have, like, these types of negotiations just do not happen completely in the open public with bidders knowing what the other one, like, it's, that's just not how this works. I, I think that the mayor is right, that we should get a, that we should get a opinion from the city attorney as to, you know, how much of a theoretical presentation would be covered by that negotiating contracts, real estate under open meeting law. I, I think it's, it can't hurt to ask any other bidders if they would be willing to do some sort of public presentation, because I think that is a good idea, the idea of having, and if a bidder chooses not to, they choose not to, that's fine, but having some sort of public forum or this being the public forum where any bidder say, hey, we're not getting into details here, but this is the general idea for what we want for this community space. I think that seems fine to me and seems to be a way that we could theoretically thread a couple needles here. So Counselor Lozon, and then Chambel, and then.
Thank you. I, I guess I'm a little more comfortable with it than maybe some of you are, because I've done it before. I presided, I was mayor when we chose Valerie as the owner of the firehouse. And at the time, Ariel Zivan, and it always works out for us, man, because Ariel ended up opening her shop down at 159 North Main. So I'm very comfortable with it, and I'm comfortable with giving, I mean, it's only going to become a game show if we let it. You know, the comments need to be respectful. I absolutely want to hear from people, because it's every bit their building as it is ours. You know, it's, it belongs to the city of Berry, not to the city council. So I, I'm comfortable with the process that you've laid out, Nicholas, and, and, you know, I think people, I think people can come in and comment and make their views known, and I'm hopeful they can be respectful, and if they can, we bounce them.
Okay, so Counselor Chambel, and then Jesse, and then Craig online.
So hearing it phrase the way Counselor Rozasak was phrasing it in terms of letting people, instead of turning it into a forum of, I want, I want, I want, it's, these are the two present, the two ways of looking at it. What I wonder, though, is let's say we have 15 people here, and let's, and let's say by chance they all came out of interest, and let's say council is leaning in one direction, and those 15 people say, well, no, I don't want that. Well, that's A, not representative of the whole city, and B, it, it, again, in my opinion, and I'm not the business person that you are, but in my opinion, I think it potentially makes the city look hard to negotiate with.
Jesse?
Please do, come right over, honey of them.
So this is not my issue, I implicitly trust all of you to do the right thing, and that, you know, it sounds like, especially from what the mayor, how he started there, it sounds like you guys are on it. You know, it's, there is a public interest because of the offer coming from the woman that runs the publicly funded organization. So people are like, wait, what's happening? Like, what, you know? I know that that's not like a huge deal, like, but it is, like, it does kind of like feel like, wait, is this like an insider thing happening? You know what I'm saying? And I think that that does kind of come across, you know what I'm saying? And so I wish you guys luck. I mean, we, we are just selling a piece of property, you know what I'm saying? Like, these things happen all the time, like, I, you know, I, hopefully, everybody just like keeps it simple, but, but, you know, just that one little tidbit that comes across does spark curiosity of the public, like, what's happening at City Hall? You know what I'm saying? Like, and so I just want to offer that, thanks.
Jesse, Craig Durham online.
Hi there, and hi, Michelle. Thank you for being there tonight. I'm the real estate agent representing, I guess, the unknown potential buyer, and I just wanted to say that they would be more than happy to, you know, make a presentation to the public if that's how this ends up playing out. Certainly not trying to be secretive about anything and would be more than happy to share their plans for that space. And just a quick note, too, it was the space, the building itself, that, that sparked their interest. It's not as if this is some big company just, you know, moving in looking to expand and grow. They love the building, the historic nature of it, so that is the draw, and that's the place where their interest starts. So I think, you know, everybody will be happy to see a presentation from both sides, and yeah, we're just happy to participate however we can.
Quick trigger does.
Counselor Lozon brought up the, the firehouse, and I actually chaired the committee that was, because. because I was on the council at that point in time. I chaired the committee that, that the city solicited bids for the purchase of the and rehabilitation of the fire station. And we used a process that was actually pretty similar to what the manager has laid out in that there were, there were private interviews with the various people and organizations who had put in proposals and where we could really dig in with questions like the long list of questions that, that the mayor shared, which are all really great and, and will provide a lot of insight for the council. And coming out of that, we then had a public process where we had an opportunity for the council and the public to ask broader questions about, you know, share your vision with us. What is it that you're hoping to do with the space? And that that sort of two-part process really helped inform the council as to all the information they needed and any input from the public as far as what to move forward. Interestingly enough, the committee that I chaired suggested something different than what the council did and the council accepted Valerie's proposal and it's done nothing but be a huge success. So.
Any other questions from council? Otherwise I'll look to the mayor for next steps. All right, Mr. Mayor.
It sounds like there, there may be, may be consensus and correct me if I'm wrong, but to follow a model a little bit like the firehouse, perhaps where you're not saying that to have any conversation that would be appropriate under law to related to the real estate negotiation and then enter a, a public presentation phase of the process whereby people can be, be able to see the offers and weigh in with their, with their legislative body. Is that, is that an approach that, that the council would support? And has enough clarity?
Yep. You're getting yeses in the room.
Okay. And Manager Strugastro, is that an approach that?
Yeah, I think that's great. I'm very glad the, the other Realtor was here. We can, I think, work on it. I'll work with Michelle. We'll craft a process that, that will include both, those elements.
Great.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Craig.
Great, great feedback from everybody. Dave, thanks for keeping us honest. With that, that takes us to the next item on the agenda unless there's any further comment on that matter. So it's the committee reset. And, and so this is a, a return to some unfinished business. Oh, I'm sorry, is there?
No, you're good.
Oh, okay. A return to some unfinished business whereby the manager has done a lot of listening, listening to staff, listening to committees. And as has council, we've gotten, we've had an opportunity to think about some different approaches. We've gotten feedback from the committee, the feedbacks included in our packets. And, and I think we're hopefully getting closer to a good compromised position that meets the needs of city staff and some of the objectives that this project started out with while also respecting the really important volunteer service and the contributions the volunteers make. And with that, Manager, do you have anything else you want to add?
No, thank, thank you, Mayor. I think you set it up very well. Just want to appreciate all the feedback that folks have submitted. I know that struck some chords with the original proposal, but I really appreciate everyone, you know, weighing in, being respectful. And I think that, you know, shared with council in your packet, the three committees that sort of officially weighed in and you'll see that the, and that's the homelessness task force, the river access task force and the cow pasture committee and their requests, as you can see in the proposed mergers combination section of the memo, were all granted. So they, their, their feedback was received and heard. And other than that, I think there's a series of, you know, precedent slash organizational type questions that would be good to get council's feedback on and then we can, before we get into the actual mergers and combinations. And also just want to, you know, I acknowledge it's not been easy for the committees, the chairs, we've had to pause the appointments, which I know is not easy. They've had vacancies. And so I know it's been a hard process, but I hope it also lands us at a, you know, the goal is to get to a better place. And I, I think this gets us there. But really ultimately, I think what we need is finality for the volunteers who put in so much time.
So to break down some of the precedent questions and thinking about how to, how to move forward, they're, they're laid out in page, I think it's page 56.
Yes.
So the first would be to acknowledge that the all-in for Berry task forces are not under the authority of the city. Does any city councilor not agree to that? Okay, no, no objections there. We can check that one off. So the next one is to revisit the conversation about council liaisons. This has been the suggestion from Clerk Dawes as a way to create greater accountability for the creation of the committees, but also to improve communication between the committee and city council. The thought here is that city council could serve as council liaison, the committees and regional bodies report back to council and that we would, as a way of getting to the point where we all have some council liaison responsibilities that we could use a standard form and, and then council could rank their preferences to, to help us see where people want to be most and then make appointments as a body. Is there any objection to that?
Seeing none.
All right, check. So the next one is for non-statutory city boards, committees and commissions, that those will be, will be staffed to the extent possible. So that means that, you know, for statutory committees, the DRB, the planning commission, the animal control committee, the, um, any, any other, I'm blanking on the other statutory committees, but that those, those will always be staffed and that other bodies will be staffed to the extent possible, but then not all bodies will be staffed and that with the intent to achieve the objective of managing staff workloads and capacity beyond business hours. And that we further understand that staff, unstaffed committees, including task forces, will still be able to get municipal body training to support that work and normal assistance from posting agendas and minutes. Are there any objections to that? Including from staff?
Seeing none.
All right, okay. The next one is if any body doesn't like this proposal that, and they want to create their own booster or friends of nonprofit entity such as like the Friends of Berry Cemeteries that, that the city council will provide or support in the form, in the administration, in the form of a micro grant of the $500 to help them set up a, a nonprofit and that would be from fundings from the committee expenses budget line. Is there any objection to allowing that for any, any committee that may not, that may want to become an independent body or an independent entity?
We just, I think Councilor Lozon and I are about to ask similar questions. So go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, that, not, I'd have to digest that more. It seems to add a layer of complexity when the whole reason we started this discussion was to simplify. And now we're encouraging folks to branch off on their own, create their own nonprofit and be committee light or something. So I, yeah, I, I'm not crazy. I could, it's not that I couldn't be talked into it, but didn't love it from the start.
I have a question and then Councilor Stockwell. So just a framing, framing, okay, great. Framing, the mayor just sort of framed those comments in the couch of this is for committees who don't, who don't like the reset, who want to do other things. Whereas I'm reading this as any committee that we have right now could choose to take the 500 bucks and create a friends of. So I'm just looking for clarity as to what's actually being proposed.
I think it was, this would be more of a solution, I think, to someone who's unhappy with it. I think you're right, Councilor Wazak, that the way it's written, it could be read both ways. But the intent was to find a pathway forward for any particular committee that, that wasn't content with the landing spot.
And a follow-up question, is this, have you, have you received feedback from anybody that is requesting this?
No.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Stockwell and then Booton.
I, I like the $500 as a, as a better idea for supporting people who are getting organized for the chairs of the committees to make, that if they get the meeting minutes in, if they, you know, pull themselves together and things are organized, that every chairperson of the committee, of a committee should have access to that funds just to keep things organized as an incentive to stay organized. I know that's not the purpose of it, but I think we should do that. I think we should change that.
Councilor Booton?
So it makes me think of the Friends of the Matheson, I think it's Friends of the Matheson Playground, which is not under the auspices of the city. And they do a fantastic job. And I think that one, would that $500 cover them, which I probably not given the current setup of it. But they, they do fantastic, well, I mean, we all know it's Ellen Severett, right? Who does the majority of it. But the, the committee does an amazing job at getting things done at the playground. And it, I actually think that that might be a model for some of our committees is to branch off and to become their own entity. This way they can choose their own members, which we've heard committee members, you know, committee chairs and members say that they don't want to have, you know, certain members on their committee for whatever reason. And, you know, they don't have to deal with the open meeting laws. They don't have to deal with something that we want, which is we want recording of those meetings, right? So the $500, I'm not, it feels like a, we'll give you $500 if you go away. Which, you know, I'm not saying that's a problem and, but, but I'm thinking, you know, like, like the Matheson Playground, Friends of the Matheson Playground, they're kind of, they're already out there doing their own thing. Granted, you know, they get, they get support from us. So, and, but that's a model that the committees that, that are currently in-house could take. Just as a side note, I'm not overly opposed to the $500,000, but 500, 500, 500.
Um, so Mr. Mayor, I guess I'll look for.
Yeah, that budget just really went up. I, you know, I think this was, the thinking behind this was really that it'd be about place-based committees in recognition that we've had a lot that are dedicated to specific facilities like the dog park, cow pasture, community gardens. Councilor Booton mentions Matheson Playground, Civic Center Auditorium, where the approach below that we're going to go through below really tries to keep everybody within the city structure. But if, if they still feel like the need to, to remain independent, there's another approach that they can take. And for all the points that Councilor Booton made better than I did.
So, go ahead.
Can I just ask another question regarding this? How much of a nightmare would it be for the $500 to stay within the city coffers? And they could do similar to what the Friends of the Matheson Playground do and they reach out to the city and ask for certain things and city council says, yeah, sure.
Well, I'm assuming that the original intent, as is written in the plan, is that the $500 is available to create the NPL.
Correct.
So that's, that clearly wouldn't get to sit in our, in our coffers because it would have to be spent in the licensing fees.
But if we were to do it similar to that where, let's say the, you know, the Matheson Playground Committee wanted the $500 and granted, they're not a city, but committee right now. But to have that.
That's just a completely different
Yep.
approach to that money. So it's, I feel like we're, we're conflating apples and pipe wrenches. So, you know, I mean, it can be a, a different discussion, but it's at the moment, it's not, it's not.
Right. I get it.
I like that apples and pipe wrenches. So I think that, so just one, something that Councilor Stockwell raised is money being directly available to committees. We already have that line item in that, in the budget right now. If committees want access to money, they can. And there are some, I see multiple chairs on here. So if you want money, reach out to the city manager because we have a line item for that. I think that I don't, I'm not okay with this as it's written right now, but I'm okay with the idea that the mayor and the manager are pitching as, of the like, all right, if you are a current city body and you want to get out and you want to be a nonprofit and have more freedom, here's $500 in Godspeed. I don't see a problem with that. I just don't think that that is accurately reflected in how it's written right now.
So to put, to put a hold, perhaps the thing to do is to put a hold on this and see after, after we, we've gotten to the point of a committee reset, if any are interested in it. And then Boot could take it up on a case-by-case basis. Would that make you more counselor, or comfortable, Councilor Wazak?
Yeah, I mean, I'm on, I mean, yes, and I'm fine with what you and the manager have explained without any edits. I just don't think that that's what's written down.
I see, Erica Rale, you have your hand up?
Yeah, you were mentioning as, as a chair of, of a committee, this $500 is, is great. And Councilor Wazak mentioned a line item for, for committees. And I, I think this is spectacular. This is the first I've heard of it, being, being a chair for committees for almost 11 years. It would be awesome if this go for stipends for folks to be on committees and be more of a cent, incentives for folks to be on committees, more than just give it, giving it out for folks to be, you know, on, on different things. So that might be a suggestion for, for just stipend, for giving out for stipend. Just, just a suggestion. Thanks.
Thank you, Erica. And again, I just think that that's apples and pipe wrenches again. Councilor Lozon?
Yes, we consider this, I, I, I don't think I could consider giving people a stipend. I mean, $500 will barely organize a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3). $125 to the Secretary of State. Then you've got a letter of determination that you have to, actually have to pay for on pay.gov when you petition the Internal Revenue Service for recognition of your exemption. So, you know, I could just see this proliferating. I could see it, you know, again, we're trying to, trying to simplify things for the city staff, for the manager, for the clerk. And I could see Friends of Elmwood Cemetery popping up, Friends of Hope Cemetery, Friends of St. Monica Cemetery, you know, Friends of the Dog Park. And, and then it, we have to start making choices, you know, in terms of who's more important. I mean, our volunteer groups have always gotten it done and they've gotten it done, you know, without a $500, you know, appropriation. And then certainly if, like with the dog park, when the volunteers came along and said, look, we need $1,000 worth of supplies and we're going to provide the labor. Well, the labor was worth four times what the, what the materials were. So we were all over that. And it worked out great for a number of years until unfortunately interest waned and the dog park got a little ratty looking. And now there is no more dog park. So, you know, again, I, I like everything that you've done Nicholas. I just prefer to keep it, keep it simple because I think when you weigh $500, it just, we're just going to have a proliferation of requests and it's going to get very complicated very fast. And it's going to get very complicated very fast.
Uh, Counselor Booton.
So I would say, I mean, given the comments that were made, we should just. Get rid of that one. Am I correct on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it tells, well, it definitely sounds like, uh, definitely put a hold on it and, uh, but potentially eliminate it altogether. But what I heard is that Counselor Stockwell was interested in extending a stipend. Counselor Lozon and Wazak are looking to not offer stipends, but to extend funding for more project-based activities. And, uh, and this item really relates to, um, supporting, um, break off nonprofits. So maybe we just put that one on hold and then see if any group may be potentially be interested in it. And then loop back to that, if that's the case, or, or is, would council be object, object to that?
I would just, I, I'm not objecting to it. I would just like to state for the record that I am completely in favor of. Stipends for municipal volunteers and making it more accessible to do this type of work. I just don't think that that's the conversation we're having.
No, that's not, that's not the item here. So, yeah. Objection though, of putting this item on, on hold and then seeing if there's any demand for that?
That's good, good.
All right. So, and certainly stipends is something that we could loop back to as a future agenda item. So, or an amendment to, to, to this proposal. The next one is that all committee and, uh, all committees that the council chooses to combine. But we're to retain and transfer all current existing members and their term. The intent here is to minimize impact, uh, volunteers that combine committees, um, people can move over and. Uh, and that they won't lose their seat and it won't put council in a position of having to go through, uh, some really tough appointment processes. Any objections?
Sounds fine.
Nope.
Seeing none.
So then, uh, over time, uh, with combined committees that may have memberships above the normal seven or nine people that. The, the, the approach would be that committees would shrink to a standard maximum membership of nine people. As members resign. Is there any objection to that approach?
Counselor Booton has a question.
So when we say resign, does that resign or their term expires?
I would, I would say it's a resignation.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. I'm fine with that then.
So then just, uh, I'll go and then, so then like if, if we combine a body and it has. Fifty, sure, 15 people and someone's term expires and asked to be re-upped.
Yes.
They get grandfathered in.
Yes.
But we won't add anyone else to the body until it falls under nine?
Yes.
That is the intent.
That's the intent.
Counselor Deering, sorry.
I'd like to add the word, uh, removed next to resign. So if a member is removed or resigned. Not that we're facing that issue, but in the event that in the foreseeable future, we do see that issue. We can make sure that that is addressed as well.
There any objection to that?
No. I wonder if, I, I'm curious as to what there is to the council thinks. Should we wait, wait? For resignations or should we just, when people's terms are up? You're done till we get to nine.
I'd say resignations.
What is? To what you said, only because it would be very unfortunate if. You had an incredibly active, uh, member who's. Unfortunately, their term just happened to come up and it's like, okay, you're off the island.
Yeah, no, I'm good. I was, yeah, thank you.
All right. So if there's objection.
One second, Mr. Mayor.
If, if we let people know that, um, you know, when we do this, this is the city's intent. You may find that there are a number of members who may be a little wishy-washy about continuing and they may resign. And get you to nine or seven or five or whatever the magic number is more quickly than you anticipated.
And then, so just following that same logic, there will also be a moratorium, I might have, this might just be a different version of what I said two minutes ago. But there will be a moratorium on appointing people to any committee that has more than nine.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Good.
If there's no objection to that, then the next, last one would be that the combined committees would, should hold an organizational meeting. At their next meeting to select the chair, vice chair and secretary clerk and. Merge prior charges and duties into a single charge for ratification by council. Any objection to that?
Seeing none.
All right. So that takes us to the, uh, proposed, uh, combinations and mergers. The first one is the combination of the transportation advisory committee and the Pasrudson Trail Committee. Into a single transportation and public works committee. Is there an objection or any comment from the public, uh, to this approach?
Seeing none.
Okay. The next one is to combine the cemetery and parks, community garden. And tree stewardship committee into a cemetery's outdoor recreation and conservation committee. Including the duties and responsibilities of a conservation committee established by statute and any relevant Vermont cemetery law. Is there any objection or comments from the public on this matter?
Uh, not from the public that I'm seeing, but Counselor Booton has his hand up.
So I do see, uh, Giuliano Cecanelli here. Um, I know that he stopped me at the, in the middle of the parking lot at Price Shopper and. It sounded like they, he wanted the cemeteries and parks separated from that, which I would be okay with. But I will allow him to speak if, since he's here.
Uh, the way it's laid out, I, I, I think it's fine. I don't think there are any real issues.
Okay.
With, with that combination. The only question I had was the 24 VSA 4505. That talks about a commission.
Yep.
A, a committee and a commission. So you might want to define what that is.
Giuliano, the city of Berry does not have a cemetery commission by our charter.
No, 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 it, well, it lists 4505 and that's the, uh, conservation, not the, it has, not the cemetery, but the conservation, uh, committee.
Yeah. And I, I can answer that is that it, the intent is, and this motion would not create a conservation commission, but would assign. The duties and responsibilities that, uh, a typical municipal conservation commission would have. To, uh, this new body, the, uh, cemetery's outdoor recreation and conservation committee. So that there, so that those elements of, uh, uh, conservation, whether it be, uh, uh, cemetery heritage. Uh, historic preservation or natural resource work, that that's, uh, incorporated as part of the charge.
So it would be defined as a committee, not a commission?
Correct.
Okay. I just didn't want to get into the weeds of, of a, a commission type situation. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Deering has a question.
We want to add the dog park committee to the, I know it's kind of been a little void. I think we even had them resign or even I think we kind of talked about, uh, discontinuing the committee altogether last year.
We did.
Yes, it was, uh, disbanded. I'm trying to find here. It was disbanded.
So it doesn't exist now? Okay, great.
It was dissolved July 2022.
Just for clarity, I'm okay with the cemetery being in there.
Looks like we're good, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we're sailing. So the next one is to combine, uh, the civic center and recreation committee. Into a buildings, facilities and indoor recreation committee. So you can see there's a little bit of distinction between the parks and, um, the indoor recreation facilities here with this approach. Is there any objection to that?
Seeing none.
All right. And so the next one is to transfer all energy committee, uh, responsibilities, which is still in existence, but it has no members. Through the planning commission, uh, since it already has current statutory authority and responsibility for energy planning. While acknowledging that planning for renewable, sustainable and affordable energy is a cross cutting issue affecting many municipal bodies. Any objections to that?
Did we have anybody apply for the energy committee? Since, I think we did. Somebody had messaged me that they did.
How recent?
Let me check my emails.
Well, even so, I mean, the intent here is that we're eliminating an extra. Committee to reduce staff, the staff burden responsibility.
That's fine. Just.
Yeah, Counselor, I'm not aware of any, I know we've had some applications. I'm not aware of an energy committee application and it is currently in, it is as the.
Okay.
Memo that was currently in charge of it.
Never mind then.
So the next, uh, one on the list is to transfer all American for Disability Act, uh, committee responsibilities. Which I understand has, currently has no members, uh, to the diversity and equity committee. And that the manager will retain a staff officer with ADA compliance responsibilities. Are there any public comments related to this?
Counselor, well, hold on, sorry. Any non-council comments? All right. Going once.
Counselor Lozon?
Counselor Lozon.
I just, uh, wanted to know the rationale. It seemed like the ADA committee, the charge of the ADA, ADA committee. Would fit more closely with building facilities. And indoor recreation. I mean, I realize it's, it's, it's everything because it's, uh, you know, it's access to sidewalks and streets and.
Right.
So, you know, it's a tough one, but it seemed, it, it just seemed like the charge more closely aligned with. Some of, uh, some of the, our committees charged with more physical assets.
Yes.
Than gaining.
And so this is a tough one. It could fit certainly in many places. Um, it could also have fit. Transportation Public Works, which is the one I think you're referencing Counselor Lozon. The outdoor one as well. So I think out of a, a combination of imperfect choices, this one seemed to be. It's going to be the sort of, like less exclusionary of some of its other, um, areas of focus.
Most all encompassing.
Most all encompass, there we go. Thank you, Counselor. So you, you're absolutely right. There's, it's a, it's a little bit imperfect, but it seemed, this seemed to be like the least imperfect. Uh, placement.
Uh, Counselor Shambel and then Erica.
I heard from Joellen Muldany today about. How, in her opinion, it would be an impossible combination. Now, I see that Joellen, Joellen is up there. I'd like her to speak to it. I'd hate to see a committee compromised, but on the other hand. Yeah, I, I understand why it would be put there.
All right, wow. So, oh, sorry.
Something that goes, just like you said, with everything.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll jump to Joellen to answer the question and then back to Erica.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, thanks for taking this up. Actually, to be more specific, my concern is that the people that had been attracted to the, with their interest to the diversity and equity committee. Were not necessarily attracted because of the ADA components. While I do see the logic behind combining the two, and I have no objection to that. My concern is this, we currently, there, there is no one, uh, left on that other committee, the ADA committee. So there would be no person, uh, who has that experience and that interest. And many years of experience actually looking into the ADA issues, um, who would serve on the committee. Unless, we do have an open seat, unless that open seat were reserved for someone who had either the skillset. That would be appropriate for ADA or an interest in that. That was my concern is that we're really, we, we really don't have. I mean, that's not the reason that people joined that committee. And since there would be no. Actual physical bodies of people coming to us from ADA. If that was the case. That there were some people coming and then, you know, that other process would work out. It would be different, but, uh, that's my only concern is that who, uh, since we have an open seat. There needs to be maybe perhaps some kind of vetting process that would allow, um. Someone with the skillsets necessary for ADA, um, compliance to, to be placed on the committee.
Thank you, Joellen, Erica, and then Counselor Booton.
Because the ADA is broken up into five titles, it's really hard to. Break it up into one committee. It's really a standalone committee because it's broken up into employment, buildings, transportation. Telecommunications and miscellaneous. So it's really hard to place it in one category. So you can place it in DNE, you can, uh, sorry, diversity and equity, you can place it in transportation. You can place it in buildings, but it's really a standalone committee. But again, it's five different titles. So. Really, it's a standalone committee. It's not really one you can really place. In a committee with other committees. That's just the way the ADA is. It's five different titles. Thank you.
Counselor Booton.
Yeah, um, I mean, we're, as we're talking about combining committees, I'm sure the planning commission had. You know, the people that applied for the commanding plant, planning commission didn't plan to. Join it for energy, um, for the energy committee as well. So I think that the combining of the, the two committees, I mean, it's, you're right. The committee members may not have planned for that, but going forward as we put more people on there, they'll understand that's part of the. The option.
Since there is a vacancy, hopefully that will attract someone who's interested in ADA to come into DNE. Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to turn it back over to you.
Yeah, so, um, so I'm hearing, uh, from Counselor Lozon, a potential interest in seeing ADA. Be part of the buildings, facilities and indoor recreation committee. Heard, uh, public feedback, uh, that it should be a standalone committee and the proposal before. From, um, manager and that I support and, uh, is that, uh, to transfer, uh, all Americans. To transfer that to the DNE committee. So, uh, maybe we start with the proposal and see if, uh, if there's consensus to do that. Is there any objection to, to the proposal?
Nope, we're good.
Okay, all right. That takes us to, um, of the remainder not transferred or combined that we retain. The remaining, um, non-charterer, non-statutory committees, including the cow pasture, the homelessness task force. Diversity and Equity and the Police Advisory Committee. Uh, so those remain untouched. Is there any objection to that?
Uh, no, I just had a question. Is that a comprehensive list?
Yes, that is.
Thank you.
And then, um, uh, since, uh, since there, uh. Any combination of the Board of Health and Animal Control Committee would take a charter revision, uh, there is still a potential to. Create an efficiency there since there is potential overlapping, uh, responsibilities. I think both have to, are required. By statute, but would be require modification of charter to. Combine them, um, just to consider that at a later date, uh, not to lock the council in, but that we're open to. Discussing that when we go through a charter discussion next time. Is there an objection to having that discussion? In the future?
Discussion, no.
All right.
I have a lot to say about it.
We do have a question from Counselor Deering.
I just had a point, or from the fourth point from the bottom, transfer all ADA committee, uh, to the diversity and equity. And then you, the next line down says, talking about, uh, retain the remaining, uh, meaning the ones that haven't been transferred or combined. And we have diversity and equity in there as well. So I wasn't sure if we wanted to take that out of that second bullet point. Because we are essentially changing that committee and making the ADA committee part of it.
Makes sense. Any objection to that?
Nope.
All right. Um, and then, so there's, there's no objection to the, uh, future discussion of the Health and Animal Control Committee. The last one is to resume equal opportunity appointments for vacant seats at local and regional entities. Um, and with that, that would, uh, that would, uh, land this, um, with a motion.
Counselor Stockwell has a question.
If we had a governance committee, would that be a standalone?
Anything we create from now on would be a standalone.
My, my take is that it would be.
Okay, thank you.
Question. Resume equal, we officially repealed the, the, the. Policy, right?
No.
Okay, okay. So we're just, we're resuming, okay, we didn't do that. Okay. So we, we're just resuming appointments under.
Picking it up, yeah.
Okay, great. Yeah, I was just looking for that.
And I would just, um, thank Counselor Wazak, I think that's a great point. I was going to mention. One of the items that, um. You know, we'll need to do in that part of the organizational. you know, we'll need to do in that part of the organizational meetings that all the committees have is, you know, the council approved on August 2nd, uh, all your appointments. And I have, I've learned that some, some committees have changed membership. You know, Erica, I don't know if Erica's still on, but for example, at one point she shared with me that certain members of the homelessness task force are not the members who are listed here. So I, and I understand this was, this was like right in the transition of when I started and Steve was getting this through. So there may have been my miscommunication, Steve's, I don't know whose it was, but that's, um, what, one of the things we will have to do is, these are the legally appointed members of every committee. On some committees, I know for homelessness task force is the case, or maybe others, maybe some of those have shifted. So council will have to ratify or reappoint or whatever the case may be to what the membership is now. So just, um,
Yep, yep.
On that point, on resuming reappointments, one of the things may be cleanup of, um, of what you approved and what is currently in place.
Um, I saw Chris Russo Fraser, you turned on and unmuted, so I didn't know if you had anything to add for us.
Yeah, um, thank you. I actually don't know how to raise my hand and see that option at the, the bottom. But, um, I just would like some clarification, um, being with the cow pasture stewardship committee. I just want to make sure that I understand this correctly, that we're a non statutory committee. And so, um, we weren't combined with another committee. And so therefore we would proceed as a nonprofit?
Nope, basically, basically nothing is changing for you.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that.
Quick and dirty.
Clarification. The other question that I had is that I, I, I think that I also heard that there was gonna be the combination of the cemetery parks and tree committee and the conservation committee. I don't think that there currently is a conservation committee.
No, that, that's, uh, Chris, it's, uh, gonna be combined into a cemetery's outdoor recreation and conservation committee. So conservation is a new, this will be one new committee. Um, you're right, there's no conservation committee now. This will be the name of the new committee.
And, um, and a part of our mission with the cow pasture committee is we are the only, um, parcel of land, I think, that is zoned in the city as conservation. So I think that it's, um, a bit of a conflict of interest, maybe. Um, I don't know how that would, how that would work out in that the cow pasture is the, the conservation land in, within the city. So that's a concern.
That, that's a great question, uh, Chris. And some of the thinking behind that is that we under, I understand that the cow pasture committee didn't want to have a broader conservation responsibility, didn't want to look at Canales Park or private land conservation or other natural resource, uh, preservation, that you really wanted to just be focused on that parcel of land, but not have a broader, uh, um, charge, uh, citywide. Is that the case?
Um, you know, uh, it seemed like that we were going to be taking on more responsibility to say with Canale Park, which is, I think, being maintained on its own. Um, you know, we do support a broader mission of more conservation land within the city. We think it's very important. But at this point in time, we just didn't have the capacity to take that on, um, with the Ursa grant being awarded soon, you know, um, I think that that wasn't part of the con, the, the, um, conversation within the committee, you know, it's, um, certainly something that we all believe in, that there needs to be more conserved land within the city. But I, so I'm, I'm just thinking that it's a little bit of a different con, um, conversation than that what we had before. Um, with that said, you know, we certainly didn't think that we had enough in common with the cemetery and parks and, um, and the tree committee. But I think if this is gonna be a final vote tonight, I think that, um, I would like to have a discussion with the committee again to see whether or not, given that, um, you know, we would, you know, that there would be this other entity on conservation land. And if the committee would like to take that, you know, out of all of the combinations, certainly the conservation land was a better fit for us. But, um, you know, we just, with the committee that we have, didn't feel like we could be doing physically anything at Canales Park. You know, I, my understanding from looking at the city website, that there's a local group within that neighborhood that kind of maintains that, that conserved parcel of land. And, you know, and at this point in time, there was no other conserved land within the city.
And thinking about, uh, step forward based on this feedback, um, would it be something that, uh, if you go back to the committee, uh, and, uh, council approves this proposal tonight, that your committee might discuss, uh, becoming part of the cemetery's outdoor recreation and conservation committee?
Um, you know, yeah, I think that that would not, I don't think that we would want to be combined. It would dilute our mission and our purpose with the conserved land, um, that we're do, working with the cow pasture. I think that that, there's, um, I don't think it would be a good fit for our committee to be combined with the cemetery and parks and tree committee. But if, if perhaps, you know, the committee might discuss and decide that, well, you know, we could be a conservation committee with the cow pasture. I, I would like to present that as an option to the, the committee, um, versus becoming a non pro, um, you know, just, um, yeah, I, I don't know how we would work or who would be on that other committee. I would think if someone was wanting to be on a conservation committee, they would want to be on the cow pastures stewardship committee because that's our mission, um, is conserve land. I, I hope I'm making myself clear.
Okay, so it sounds like you're interested in the, the conservation aspect of the, the, the proposed committee for on cemeteries and outdoor recreation moved down to, uh, in to be combined into your part of your committee's mission and that you'd have a broader citywide responsibility with that and that. And I see, uh, the manager has his hand raised.
Yeah, and, and Chris, I just want to be really, really clear that I'm understanding because, um, the last proposal that was made was to create a cow pasture and open conservation lands committee. And the cow pasture committee wrote in opposition to that. So now I, I feel like I'm hearing the opposite. And I just want to make sure I'm completely understanding what you want because I, I think this, this merger was in response to your letter, which we included in the packet, which was to really have a, you know, like I said, cow pasture and open conservation land. So I just, for, for real clarity for me, it would be helpful to know what, if I'm not understanding or if something changed. But that's what led to what we have tonight.
Okay, so, uh, you know, I, perhaps I wasn't listening clearly, um, that you, that the proposal was cow pasture and open conservation land. Is, is that the proposal?
No, no, Chris, that was the last proposal that I guess I have to call it the, my proposal.
Yes, so, so.
The January proposal, yeah. So it was a, the proposal back then was for a, now I've lost. It was a cow pasture and open conservation lands committee. And the cow pasture committee considered that proposal at its January 19th meeting and it opposed it very much. And so, um, for very valid reasons, I, I might add. I'm just very, I just want to make sure I'm understanding because I'm confused because I thought I heard you say the opposite tonight. So I want to make sure we're being responsive, but the proposal that the council is looking at tonight was trying to take into account the feedback the cow pasture committee provided, which was to oppose, um, something called the open conservation, cow pasture and open conservation lands committee.
And, and I, I am sounding a little ambiguous there, um, but I guess I'm just wondering, since there's no conservation committee now, certainly I know in the past that we have had memberships, um, you know, that would have normally joined the cow pasture committee, go to, uh, rec trails committee because, um, of recruitment in that way. So I guess I don't know, um, what kinds of, um, I, I guess you could have the cemetery parks and tree committee and combine with a conservation committee. And if somebody steps up to, you know, be a member of that larger group, I guess there's no conflict of interest with the cow pasture committee. But I, I guess, um, I guess move forward as it is, uh, just as proposed so that the cow pasture, um, committee would be a standalone, but we would not have to be, um, a, a nonprofit, um, but that would, that would be our mission. Because I, I know that there would be a lot of hurdles to go through and additional work to become a nonprofit, as was mentioned earlier in the meeting. And, um, I, I, I personally don't have the capacity to and desire to, to do that. So as long as we can be left as is and, um, and I guess it would be great for the city to have somebody else on a committee that is looking to conserve more lands within the city because I think it's very important. So, um, thank you, Nicholas, for kind of clarifying and helping me think, think this through. But, um, yeah, I think, I think that we are, would be pleased as a committee to be, to continue with our mission with the cow pasture stewardship committee, especially moving forward in the next two years and meeting the, um, expectations of the Ursa grant within a two-year period.
Thanks for talking us through that and thanks for all the, the great work that your committee is doing in that, that space. And I know, uh, I'm excited to see the Ursa grant and, uh, access improvements up that way. So.
Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, uh, could I, could I just add something? It's, it's an addition to the, the committee, the way it's, the way it's worded. So it's, uh, cemeteries and outdoors and conservation committee. Would it be possible just to leave it out for now and just flesh it out? Um, because our committee hasn't met yet and, and maybe, um, you know, as it stands, no one's interested in doing that. So I don't know.
Well, I, I appreciate that feedback, um, Juliano. However, we've, we've had this in, in progress for more than, more than six months. And, uh, although I understand your point that this is, uh, you know, a, a newer proposal, um, but are, are you foreseeing that you would, your committee would object to taking on, uh, the, given that you're already in charge of parks, but cemeteries, outdoor recreation and conservation?
I, I don't know because I, I honestly can't speak for the other committee members.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have counselor Booton and then myself.
So I, I think I know it. Um, once again, that's really weird. No, no, it's, it's fine.
If you move it away from here, it'll be much better.
True, true.
Put it right off the edge.
But can everybody else hear me? Oh, okay. I think what Chris is asking for is that she wants a carve out of the conservation part of the cow pasture committee. That, that would be, which is fine by me. And that's the conserva, conservation specifically of the cow pasture committee. And then the other, the, the cemetery parks, all that other is.
No, we're not, we're not allowing it to you.
And that they would handle all the rest of the city. Am, am I correct on that, Chris? Is that kind of what you're, what you would like to see?
No, I, I, I think what I heard, uh, it was, the audio was not great, um, from my end. But I, I, just to be clear, I think at this point in time, you know, um, I think conservation lands is our mission and the cow speci, cow pasture specifically. But I, at this point in time, we don't have the capacity to look at other areas within the city as, and broaden our mission at this point in time because we're just so focused on, um, meeting the upcoming expectations of the Ursa, Ursa grant.
Oh, so that's, that's what I just said, was that you would focus on conservation in the cow pasture? And that's, that's what you want? You want to carve out of that part, part of it?
Yes, please.
And I'm okay with that.
Sounds good. So I, I think, okay, I just want to say, and I mean this with all due respect, Chris and Giuliano, I really feel we're kind of arguing, not arguing, but talking about semantics. We're just sort of, there is no like legal, it's not like, you know, the planning commission, there is no legal, like, this is the conservation committee, this is what you must do. I think the understanding of the entire council is that the cow pasture committee will be completely, will continue to have complete reign and authority, for what it's worth, over the cow pasture. And as we are combining parks, our trees, our cemeteries, our community gardens, it makes sense that conservation is in that general conversation. And I also want to say that like, we could vote on this tonight and then change it in two weeks. That's the will of the council. So I think we should, I, I'm going to now make the motion to approve the recommendations as presented by the manager. Uh, and if we hear feedback over the next couple of months that something's not working, the council can adjust.
Second.
Or we could wait until the 11th.
There's a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, or we could wait until the 11th because this was presented as simply committee reset and not approval of committee reset. And that way it will give it, listen, and I would vote, if it said approval of, I would absolutely vote for it tonight. I think the manager's done a good job under difficult circumstances. And I'm surprised we've only had the limited pushback, quite frankly, that we've had. But, uh, I know that our cemetery commission, you know, they're one of our more active committees. And if Giuliano would like the courtesy of two weeks to poll his members, you know, I'm happy to give them that two weeks, but I will likely, unless something extraordinary comes up on April 11th, I would be, and I don't think you're implementing this like tomorrow, right? So unless something extraordinary comes up on April 11th, I will be voting for this on April 11th.
I'm sticking with my motion, but I understand.
Yeah, and I, I, I'm with counselor Lozong and that we can, if we need to revisit in, uh, in two weeks with a narrow, much narrower targeted scope conversation, that's fine. But to me, it seems semantics that just because of the word of approval isn't in the, the, I mean, the memo is very clear. It's, it's posted with the agenda, it's in the packet, there's a recommended motion. There's nothing ambiguous about, but what the, what's before the council here, so.
That was in the details.
Well, there's a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Seeing none.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, it sounds like.
We had an abstention from counselor Deering.
Okay, so is that, uh, so I'm an aye as well. So does that make four?
Yeah, we had one abstention and no votes against, so.
Okay, all right. So that takes us to the next item on our agenda, which I'm scrolling up through 20 pages. I'm almost to number one. It's committee reset, uh, the approval of the strategic plan. So, city manager.
Thank you, mayor. Um, so this is, uh, uh, round two with the full council with the strategic plan. Um, we had a, um, great conversation the first time around. Wanted to give, uh, everyone on council, this is a, you know, thicker document lots to take in. So wanted to give, uh, after we had a really good first conversation, wanted to give people, um, a, uh, an opportunity to digest it, take it in and, um, and so that's what we're here for today. But I just want to say was, from my perspective, a really terrific process. I kind of came in, uh, a couple of months after it had started, um, but a lot of work between, um, counselors, the city staff, including several, uh, sessions with, all day sessions with Jim, person who's been helping us put this together. And I think you have here in the memo sort of the key takeaways, um, the, the five, uh, the five key goals in the, um, in the three-year strategic plan. I really want to turn it over to you, um, for any discussion. Otherwise, uh, would love to get this approved. Want this to become, you know, my, my philosophy, just I'll share what it's worth is been in a lot of places where a lot of these things sit on the shelf and I really don't want this to sit on the shelf. I think there's a lot of good feedback and input in here. Um, and so, um, find a way to make it not just, um, part of our work with the department heads on a regular basis, but visually, you know, poster boards, just making sure that it's part of our, what's guiding our work. So, um, I probably said more than enough. Turn it over to you. So, Deering?
Recommended action is to move the uh move to authorize the management to execute a contract. I don't think that's the right action you want for this one.
That's embarrassing. I recycle my memos.
I was, I mean, I went through it and I really liked it. But I just wanted to make sure that we were authorizing the manager to do what he's supposed to.
So we don't have, you don't have to authorize me to do anything. We're just really approving it.
Yeah, so we.
I see. So is this where we offer comments?
Yes.
This is our chance? Okay. Page five, we change where it says is financially sustainable to responsible and sustainable? Just seemed like a nice word.
Is, I'm sorry, Counselor, you were.
Responsible and.
Sorry about that.
No objections to that?
Is financially responsible and sustainable?
Yep.
Sustainably responsible.
Page six, and I'll just go through quickly, um where we talk about cost, third bullet point. Likely to have a positive impact. Um you know, there's a lot of. I realize you're talking about cost, but there are there are times where you have to measure. Projects on more than just the financial impact, you know, there's there's a social impact, there's inequitable impact. And um so I just wanted to cross out the word financial, even though I know you're talking about costs there.
I I I mean, it's fine with me. There's plenty of other pieces here that talk about the cost in that section, so.
Okay, I didn't think it would really change things. Uh next page on seven. Change three to become a great employer, to just to be a great employer. Because I don't know that we're not a great employer now. We always have room for improvement, but. I think I would. Uh yeah. Page eight, uh where you talked about um. Develop a TIF increment financing strategy and playbook for the city to simulate infill housing development. Is that possible? TIF districts don't exist outside. I've never, I've never, would we have to seek a general legislative specific? I mean, I've I've had that idea to go to the legislature with a specific housing TIF district, but I don't think it's.
Well, at the moment, it's at the moment, it's not, it's not an option. The legislature is is uh um considering. Creating project based based TIFs and if they do, once our current TIF district is over. The city could um apply for one. Uh so I mean, it's aspirational, but.
Advocate for a something like.
Oh, I'm loving them all over the place.
Counselor Lozak to that play.
I just want to manage the expectations that there's no such thing.
Well, right, that's what I mean. So like advocate, adding the words like advocate for the development of a.
Yeah.
Well, see, I I I disagree with that because I I read that to mean that we're looking at potential TIF plan amendments. Um and those amendments would uh. Develop a strategy um but and that strategy could include infill housing development. Versus new legislation, but it could also be new legislation. So uh. So maybe that we're we're both thinking about this from this just different angles, but uh this language provides the flexibility.
Don't have a objection to the, didn't have an objection to the sentence per se, it was just wanted to manage the expectations that. As things are today, and I realize there's a number of amendments currently floating around uh the State House. But as things exist today, it's not a, you can't do a pocket TIF district. But then the third bullet point was a little troubling, prioritize areas of the city to serve as special tax districts to develop necessary infrastructure. What does that mean? Like, because it's such an honor to own property in the downtown and do business in the downtown, we're going to tax you more? I'm out.
It's it um, an example is our charter allows us, we haven't, at least not in recent memory. But um our charter allows us, if we're doing um sidewalk improvements on a particular street. We can enter into a a payment agreement with the the properties that are served by that new sidewalk. Where we split the cost. Um so it's creating sort of a a a cost sharing. Across the that benefits both the city and the the properties in question. So it's a similar kind of thing. It's like if the city were um developing infrastructure that that served just a. A small portion of the the city, there could be a um a cost sharing option.
That's very different than a special tax district.
A special assessment district.
Yeah, I mean, that's way different. So what you just described is, yeah, I'm, yeah. So I mean, I I guess I look at this, it's, you know, there are a number of policy changes uh or policy commitments in this document. And. I think a lot of them really require more discussion than, you know, five minutes of ten on a Tuesday night and. You know, to push it forward. There's a lot of things in here, for example, uh changing our economic development model by bringing economic development responsibilities in house. Uh maybe I'd like to have the discussion, but I'm not going to put it in a strategic plan. Because it's not my plan right now. It's something I'm absolutely willing to discuss. And a strategic plan is exactly that, a plan. So I'm looking at a number of. Things in this document that I just, I can't support because it's not, it's not, hey, let's talk about this. This is a strategic plan that says, hey, we're going to do this. And, you know. Dismantling barrier development of the BARRY F partnership, right now, that is the last thing on my radar. I'll talk about the opiate addiction, the opiate crisis, I'll talk about challenges that our elderly face. I'll talk about homelessness, I'll talk about our housing challenges, I'll talk about all those things before I'll talk about dismantling barrier development. And the BARRY partnership.
Well, respectfully, neither one of those things are in. I said, neither one of those, those are not proposals contained within the strategic.
Well, it's right here. I'm reading it.
It's renegotiated.
Our economic development model by bringing economic development responsibilities in house rather than shared with the town of BARRY. Well.
I know, that's different than saying we're abolishing the ADZ and the BARRY partnership.
It does say renegotiate our relationship.
I live here too.
So so in the interest and recognition of your point, Counselor Lozak, it is getting late. You know, and it seems, sounds like you have pretty substantial concerns. Um I'm not opposed to uh. Seeing this on a new uh future agenda, um but also um want to acknowledge that certainly this council has had plenty of opportunities. Multiple venues via email, uh via draft review, uh to provide comments. And so it is coming as a bit of surprise to me that you have so much feedback so late in this process.
Wait, no, no, Colin, you're right out on that one. Three weeks ago, I sat here and asked the manager, when would you like our comments? And he said, I'll be circling back in two weeks. It's been three. I've been holding my comments. I wasn't asked to share them, you know. I thought we were a council, I thought we discussed things. So that's what I was waiting for. That opportunity was supposed to happen two weeks ago, it didn't, and I'm fine with that. We all get busy. This is when, this is when we said we would be talking about it. It just happened to be a longer meeting, so it's five minutes of ten.
Is there a motion?
Counselor Shambel has her hand up.
I I propose we put it off in terms of the vote till the 11th. I I'd rather not, but I I think in. Deference to Counselor Lozan's. Wanting to have the discussion and we really, I do recall, there wasn't really a discussion the last time. So. Unless there's a rush on this, is there?
Uh there's no rush. I will, I will just comment that um none of these words came from. Me or one person. This is a document that was created by everybody on this table, everybody sitting at this table. Plus many of the people who are on the screen now, um and it started in spring of 2022. So I I just do want to mention, it's, you know, this, this, the first time the council see this, saw this was not a couple of weeks ago. This has been a working product for many, many months preceding my start here. So. All of these words come from a collective effort. That we've been engaged in for quite some time. There's, that said, there is absolutely zero timeframe. This is our, this is our own deadline.
And I did not make a motion. I said I propose.
Well, I just, I don't understand why go through the formal process of table. You know.
So is there unanimous consent to just have this on the agenda for the 11th?
No, Counselor Shambel has her hand up.
Okay.
It would be nice to have it earlier on the agenda, give an allotted amount of time and then take the vote. Taking a Saturday or a totally different time after.
We did take a Saturday, by the way. We we had a Saturday.
I was gonna say substantial time. On this and substantial energy and your point is, well, take it.
Oil can.
How this has been drafted over and over and over again.
It's been around.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Dearing.
I know that some of us served on the design team for this and have seen this document a lot. And others of us have not seen this document a lot. So with all due respect to Counselor Lozak, I completely understand where you're coming from in a lot of these questions. And feel that having some time to think about them and to actually contemplate what's going on. Might be important for somebody that was not involved in the process from day one. Speaking from the design team side, which I was on, as well as two councillors and even the mayor participated in. I think that some of our other councillors might need some extra time to give that time. For consideration, for all the things that we would like our councillors to do. So while we have no set time timeframe or time limit while we're trying to approach this. I think it would only be respectful to give that time to Counselor Lozak. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dearing. So is there a motion or unanimous consent to have this uh brought back on the 11th? What's the will?
Looking like unanimous consent.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll uh look back to this on the 11th and uh give it some some deliberation time.
Yes, Roundtable.
So upcoming, upcoming business, uh I I I, we put off the discussion of the. Uh kind of June barbecue date set, just because this agenda was looking a little bit heavy, but it'd be fun to do some more based meetings. Maybe even a downtown merchants meeting and mixed in the mix with that as well, to get out in the community while the the weather's nice and. Uh and meet members um in in the neighborhood. I think uh Counselor Stockwell, you mentioned maybe wanting to have a discussion about Garfield. Park issue, but that may interfere. Faced with the outreach that's already happening, so definitely let the manager know. I think the D and E committee will have uh an advisory opinion ready on the ideal program. For council at some point in April. And other than that, that's all I have. Are there other upcoming items, Nicholas or members of council?
The paving contract, uh if all goes well tomorrow, uh it could come on the 11th, uh fees probably come on the 11th. The uh council approved a couple of weeks ago sole source procurement for auditor, and I think that might be ready as well. And there's probably a handful here that I'm forgetting, but those are just off the top of the head. How am I?
Okay, anything else from council?
Counselor Stockwell.
Yes, I'd like to take another crack at the governance committee, but I'd like to take about a month to rewrite it and and bring it back to council.
All right.
Let's foolish rush in.
And uh miss, no, go ahead.
Oh, if there's no, I was just gonna say, if there's nothing else on upcoming business.
Yep, I have one piece of upcoming business on April 25th. Is that the meeting after? Yeah, April 25th. Um I'll be bringing forward a community investment ordinance that I've been working on with the manager. I'll make sure council has that well ahead of time.
Sounds great. And that's been uh uh with 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 staff coordination?
Yes. That has involved, just so council knows, that has involved at least the city manager, the director of DPW, the HR director, the finance director, the clerk and treasurer and. Presumably, everybody else works.
Anybody walk it through the bill? Would you look at this?
Uh with that, uh Counselor Wazak, do you want to run us through uh Roundtable?
Sure, uh Counselor Dearing.
And what a pleasure it was to see James to honor uh not only the Spalding Girls hockey team, but Rowdy. It's been a pleasure to watch them all season um from the filming aspect of uh CBT Sports. But to just see them at the Gerson Fieldhouse and to perform the way they did. And for us to celebrate them like we had this evening um was just one of the beautiful moments of sitting on council. Many things that we do um that aren't always um nice and positive, shall we say. But this was a very nice and positive event. And I remember that. So uh I hope that some of us can join um them uh next Friday at nine AM at the State House for the resolution.
This Friday?
No.
Next Friday.
It is next Friday. Okay, okay.
Nine AM.
Uh Counselor Shambel. Counselor Booton. Thank you for the chairs and I will pass. Counsel, oh, sorry, Counselor Stockwell.
I was looking at the Heritage Festival coming up and I was thinking, you know, the parade was good last year. I thought we did well in the parade. But I thought we should do a bathtub race. Of course, my technical skills in this area are endless. But I I did think that with this, with we could pull together and we could do, we could enter the bathtub race as a council. Yeah, I saw bathtubs. I know a bathtub when I see it.
All right, Counselor Lozak.
Council has won a bathtub race at the Heritage.
Hey, it's tax season, something, you know, I try to give uh two things that our residents might be able to take advantage of. Vermont actually has a child tax credit now. We never did before. It is a refundable credit. So just want to remind folks, even folks who uh don't normally final file a tax return, if you have dependents. You can get up to $1,000 back per child and that is a refundable credit. And the second thing is, I'm constantly sad when I run into a resident. Who I help with a property tax rebate claim for the first time and they have qualified for at least 10 years. So Carol is great about that in the city clerk's office, stopped one of one of your friendly councillors. But just make sure you take advantage of the programs that could help you specifically. The child tax credit and the property tax rebate. Thanks, I'm good.
And I'm more than happy if people call the office, I can direct you exactly how to go through it, where to find the information on the. My V tax website, where to find the information on your tax bill, we can help you out. Mister Mayor.
All right, I'm at, you know, I don't have a comfy seat. I'm sitting on the lobby of the hotel floor in Boston. So I didn't keep my roommate up tonight, but it's been a great mainstream American conference. I've seen Tracy, the partnerships director here. I've seen our former planning director, Josh Schwartz from Berry City. Great, as you can tell, he's familiar history and uh and uh great crowd from Vermont and all over the country. Learning about uh downtown vitality, uh so definitely a pleasure to get away. Thanks to Counselor Dearing, our high school, well, school school sports champion for bringing that resolution. Thought that was awesome. It was uh too bad not to be there. And uh and I will say, Counselor Stockwell called me while I was touring in LGTPQ plus, the first in New England. Uh affordable housing project, uh that um that uh is incredible school renovation in Hyde Park in Boston. So really cool project.
So really cool project, and, and I'm excited to come back to Berry and, and continue to, to be at the table. And with that, that takes us to our executive session for litigation. Is there any other matter that needs to come up in executive session recognizing our time tonight?
Litigation and labor.
And litigation and labor.
Personnel valuation of a public official.
Personnel, labor, and litigation.
Okay.
I'll move for findings.
Second.
Motion for findings in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, guys have it, I see, uh, Mr. Delcor.
Executive session with the manager.
One second.
You have any?
Hold on. Nicholas, are we, hold on, sorry, Tom. Nicholas, are we expecting any action?
No, no action.
No action, Dave.
All right, thanks. Have a good night.
Night, Dave.
Sorry, go ahead.
There's a motion in a second to enter executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Wait, wait, wait. Okay, we're just gonna back up. Tom, can you reoffer the motion?
My motion was to enter executive session to discuss personnel and litigation.
And labor.
And labor. We're inviting the manager to attend as well.
And I second it.
There we go.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, guys have it, we're entering executive session.
Wait, wait for it. Okay, now.
I will move to come out of executive session at 10:47.
Seconded, and Mr. Mayor, just so you know, the manager is taking notes of this.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Do you adjourn?
Second.
Motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, we are adjourned at 10:46. Thanks, everybody.
Night, Jake.